Welcome to our city council meeting this evening. For me tonight was a thought or indication and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Barker. I would like to exclude excuse Councilmember Dowd Pass, he's a little under the weather, so he has joined us. He is on. So Councilmember Barker.
We'll give it per. Very good my brother, we're grateful that we can meet tonight as citizens of North August and that we can discuss these items on the agenda. We're grateful for the citizen involvement that we have and they came out to support us tonight. Please bless them, we'll be able to listen to what they have to say and that we can make the best decisions possible. Bless us that we can make a good financial decision with our budget as well, you seem to say in Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into our agenda. Let's see to. There are a conflict of interest in regarding citizens on this evening. Okay, since everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda, see no declarations of conflict of interest. So we'll move on now to our active agenda. We'll now have public comments. John, if you could watch online for us, anyone here who would like to comment? Please step up to the podium, state your name, you're a resident of North August and please limit your comments to five minutes. That would be the time if anyone has comments. John's telling me no one on line, so we'll move on to item number three on our agenda.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I had a phone call from Tyler Crittenden.
Yeah, we're addressing that.
Right, but he's not going to be here today.
We have an agenda to address here, I got that, he'll be, Tate will be. Deferring that, I have until the 12th of July, I won't be taking a motion on that in a minute. Item number three was scheduled to be a discussion or action to consider an ordinance to the zone cross the, for that located at approximately 2067 North Washington Boulevard. Brandon will be our presenter, however, we would ask that this item be tabled until the applicant arrives. Another city council meeting, we're first on the agenda, so we can table that until the applicant arrives or we can put them at the end of the agenda, whichever you're liking.
I'm okay tabling it till they get here.
Okay. So a motion, Councilmember Barker?
Absolutely, let's table this one.
I have a. This is a table, actually, because we'll be, we'll be addressing that later this evening. So Councilmember Barker has motioned to table this item till the applicant arrives. I'll discuss this result with the item second, the Councilmember Barker's motion.
My second.
Second by Councilmember Severing. All in favor, take names until the applicant arrives, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Now move on to the item you were mentioning. This evening, Councilmember Severing, this was scheduled to be a discussion or action to consider amendment to an ordinance in regards to side yard reductions. This was going to be presented by Cas, by Brandon Bell. The individual has, is not able to attend this evening, so they've asked to postpone this item. Until July 12th. Is that what you were?
Yeah, he just called me like 45 minutes ago, so had I known that, I would have.
No, that's okay, I think he called about everybody, so.
Oh, okay.
So we did take care of that, so I do need a motion to postpone this item until the July 12th, 2022, council meeting, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I moved that we move discussion number four to consider an ordinance for amendment, the side yard reduction until July 12th.
Thank you, Councilmember Severing, you have a motion, or you have second to Councilmember Severing's motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion, the second, is there any discussion on this? Sign that and all in favor of postponing this item. From July 12th, 2022, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. And now we'll move on to item number five on our agenda. This is an order to add two family dwellings into the RCC zone. Brandon, looks like there's something on this, if you'd like to come forward and, you know.
Evening Mayor and members of the council, I think what I'm concluding is that when I present, people don't like to show up, so. The, so this is regarding two family dwellings in being added back into the RCC zone. This is a legislative decision, legislative land use decision. When the city is considering a legislative matter, the planning commission acts as a recommending body to the city council on those land use issues. The city does have wide discretion in taking legislative actions. Examples of legislative actions are general plan and zoning map and land use text amendments. Legislative actions require that the planning commission give a recommendation to the council. And typically, the criteria for making these types of decisions. Require compatibility with the general plan and existing codes. The planning department and general plan committee recently discussed the potential for reinstating two family dwellings as a permitted use in the residential city center zone. The planning commission then considered this issue at their meeting on May 4th, and they held a public hearing at that time. They voted to recommend that the proposed ordinance, which would permit two family dwellings not be adopted. More detail will be provided later regarding that vote and motion on this ordinance. Staff recommended the adoption of the ordinance to the planning commission, and that view has not changed. The staff recommended the ordinance. As presented tonight with the requirements listed in this report, and I think the key point being there that there are a number of points. There are a number of requirements that were the ordinance to be adopted that would be put in place by the ordinance. That are not restrictions, but requirements for two family dwellings. There are some unique issues with regards to property lines and setbacks and things like that, and so. You know, the recommendation of staff is conditioned upon those requirements being adopted as part of the ordinance, and I'll go over those in a little bit more detail later. One key reason why the staff supports the reinstatement of two family dwellings in the RCC zone is the newly adopted updated future land use map. Which is part of the general plan and supports two family dwellings in the RCC zone along Washington Boulevard to 2850 north. Steph also recommended the addition of two family dwellings back into the RCC zone generally during the consideration of the updated future land use map. So Steph's reviewed the history of two family dwellings in the RCC zone. This was a historically allowed use and has been listed in the purpose statement of the zone, which purpose statement is typically at the beginning of the ordinance and it. And it describes what the general idea and reason for the zone is. This, the RCC zone was adopted in 2005, and John, would you, are you able to pull up the zoning map so we can see where the RCC zone is? I forgot to include that in my report, if you were able to do that, I think that'd be helpful, but it's basically just to the north of us here. It's a few block area, maybe half mile by half mile, and we'll get some more detail on that when John's able to pull up the zoning map. But it was adopted in 2005 and included two family dwellings at that time as a permitted use, which were determined to be compatible with this neighborhood. Visioning process occurred to determine what type of development should be permitted in this neighborhood in response to some townhomes that were built. That some residents had concerns with. The RCC zone was the result of that process and included the original purpose statement. Including two family dwellings. Duplexes and twin homes were eliminated as a use in the RCC zone in late 2016. Shortly thereafter, in mid 2017, accessory buildings were added as, sorry, that should actually read accessory dwelling units were added as a permitted use to the zone with certain requirements. So the key difference there is that accessory dwelling unit, and that would be a detached accessory dwelling unit. Would be, would, the main home would be required to have an owner on site, whereas with duplexes. You could have two renters on, on a property that, where neither was an owner of the property, and so I think that probably, I didn't research this issue, but. Given a general history of thoughts on ownership and things that have been discussed in the city, probably a decision on that had a lot to do with that issue. On a, on a related note, in a more statewide context, the state legislature made internal ADUs mandatory in most single family. In most single family zones statewide, and that would include the RCC zone. So as of the last, I think it was 2021, we, the state adopted an ordinance that, a law that said. Everyone by right in a single family home can have a second family living in their home. Most of the time that would be in the basement, that was one way that they tried to tackle affordable housing issues. So the way that that relates to this issue is that. There's already been some wholesale modification of single family zones in the state recently, and that's a similar use to duplexes or twin homes. And so, they're not exactly the same thing, but we're trying to provide the contexts heard recently in the state on these sorts of issues. With the addition of internal ADUs being permitted within the zone, and also in the broader context of those recent changes on a state level. Reinstituting twin family dwellings may be considered a very small degree of change to the zone. Staff is of the opinion that allowing two family dwellings makes sense in the RCC zone as it was originally permitted. The purpose statement of the zone includes language that says. That it's to provide a residential area that encourages the preservation of single family dwellings in the historical area of North August City, but will also accommodate the development of dwelling types. From single family through two family dwelling units with their associated necessary public services and activities, which fits the character of the existing city center. It is ours also to provide an orderly transition from less intensive, lower density uses to more intensive, higher density uses. Allowing two family dwellings to be added back into the list of permitted uses for the zone would simply be reinstating the use that was previously permitted for many years. That the residential city center zone is overwhelmingly built out, so we, staff believes that this would have, it wouldn't have a massive impact. Because anything that was developed would either have to be redeveloped or, and resubdivided, or there's a small amount of empty lots in, in that area that, that could be used as well. So staff holds the view that two family dwellings are consistent with the nature of the residential city center zone. And, but that, that recommendation is, and view is based on the following conditions. And I'm going to kind of go through these because it seems like a simple issue, but there's a lot of details that kind of, as we, as we worked through it. Scott and I felt like that there were a number of things that just needed to be put in place to make sure that it was fair and also like building code issues, that type of things that came into place. So the recommended requirements, if this ordinance was adopted, are as follows, these are from staff. Maximum two units may have a shared wall to create a two family dwelling. Each of the units must reside on a separate lot approved by the city in the appropriate subdivision process. The shared wall of the two connected units must be located on the side property line of the adjoining lots. Walls connecting two units where each unit is on a separate lot and share a side property line are exempt from the side setback requirements for a single family dwelling in the zone. That would just mean that the walls can actually connect, and they would connect. You know, connect at the property line, so the property line would run through the edge of the two units where they join in the center of the, of the building as a whole. All walls not connecting units where each unit is on a separate lot and share a side property line must follow the required setback distances for the zone. So what that would mean is that on the opposite outside sides of the dwelling units where they aren't joined to another unit. They would need to meet the typical single family home setback for the zone. The, on lots where. Two units are connected, the lots would be required to meet the lot width requirement when the lot width of both lots are combined and not individually. In other words, the lot width requirement shall be measured and applied as if the two lots are one lot or one single family home lot. The point of that is that it's essentially trying to meet the lot width requirement for each lot individually, for duplex would basically undo the ordinance. Because the size requirements would make, wouldn't make it economical to save any money. This would allow them to meet when the two lots are combined and then each lot becomes smaller. A subdivision or subdivision amendment must be approved for all lots for duplexes to be permitted. A, the, the minimum lot size would need to be met, but the minimum lot size for lots with a. With a twin home unit on them are, would be 5,000 square feet. The maximum building coverage requirement on a lot and minimum vegetative areas requirements would also need to be met for each individual lot. Let's see, the. The, the, the lots would need to go through a subdivision process that identified each of the lots as a R lot or a restricted lot. And what that would do is essentially identify that you have to put a two family dwelling on that lot. So you couldn't, you couldn't subdivide the lots saying, oh, we're going to put a two family dwelling on, well, you know, half of each, each unit on each lot. And then come back in and do a single family dwelling, so they would be restricted to only allow two family dwellings under that requirement. The next requirement is that a subdivision must be properly approved by the city to ensure the property lines and units are properly located. Then the resulting building lots and dwellings meet the requirements of the zone. And then the shared walls joining the units would need to meet the requirements of the building code enforced by the city at the time of building permit application. There's also one additional recommended requirement in here that's, that I left out of the report, but is in the ordinance, which just states that. Single building permit would be issued for the, for the. Twin home or duplex, and that they wouldn't be able to occupy either unit until both have been final. That, that staff thought through that, we felt like that was the safest way to allow, to make sure that both units get finished prior to occupancy. And so that, so that, you know, you don't have half of it get finished, have someone, you know, have a mortgage on that unit. And have another unit that obviously affects that property because it's attached to it and have it never get finished. And so, the point is that no one can move in, creates an incentive for both units to get finished, you know, before anyone moves in. So this city, staff's views that the city council should consider whether two family dwellings are compatible with the relevant sections of the general plan and the character of the residential city center zone. And if so, if there are relevant conditions either from the above list or other conditions that the council believes should be required. The relevant content from the general plan involves a statement regarding that there should be higher densities allowed in multi-family. Allowing limited multifamily in the Old Town neighborhood, especially to the west, seem to be logical. It also states that encouraging multifamily in the downtown around 7, 2700 north. The Old Town neighborhood map is shown in this report, and so that encompasses the RCC zone and. Let's see. And then John, I think you were able to grab the zoning map. And so you can see that the center of the, of the map is the residential city center zone, it's like John's going to point to it. So it's kind of a greenish tailed color, and so it's basically, I can't remember the exact northern boundary, but I think it goes to about. 3100 or so.
Or 2850.
Sorry, 2850, okay, thanks. So there were a couple of details regarding the motion that the planning commission made. They approved a motion in a six zero vote recommending to the city council that two family dwellings not be allowed in the RCC zone. And that this proposed ordinance not be adopted. That's primarily due to the fact that accessory dwelling units are understood to meet the same type of dwelling needs, but maintain the character of the neighborhood. So there, that was their position that, that they felt like the same underlying purposes could be accomplished while not affecting the character of the neighborhood. And there's, obviously that implies that there's some, there was some concern about whether twin family homes, two family homes would. Effect that to some degree, and then the commissioner did however recommend that the lot size for detached ADUs be reduced to a smaller lot size from its current 20,000. That's not a part of this ordinance, that was just a request that staff look at that issue. And then there was also a suggestion by a commissioner that smaller ADUs be allowed on a lot, but that recommendation was not included in the motion that was approved. We did mention that we'd bring that forward to the council, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding the idea of. How ownership, onsite ownership, where, you know, owner occupancy affects the, the care for the property and, you know, the, the impact, potential impact on the neighborhood. That the planning commission discussed, and that was an item of, you know, a principal interest in them. So staff's recommendation is that the city council should conduct a review of and discuss, a discussion regarding the proposed ordinance amendment. And consider whether they believe the ordinance amendment should be adopted. So I've kind of thrown a lot at you, wanted to get those technical details out just because there's, you know, if the ordinance was adopted. Wanted to put a number of safeguards in place to make sure that there weren't problems that were caused by the adoption of ordinance. So are there questions, however, that the council or the mayor might have for myself?
Council, Councilmember Swanson, I believe you were probably on the city council, that was changed not to have. Do you recall what the basis or what the feelings were on?
Yes, no, I could not, I can't remember that discussion at the moment. I know there, there was some discussion or concern at the time that. That, that. And John smacked me if I'm remembering incorrectly, but I seem to recall that some discussion around. Out of state, out of town developers buying some of the older homes, demolishing them and building a twin home on a single lot. And that that could possibly take over this part of town.
I know in a recent discussion. One of the issues that has come up is the fact that investors are buying these properties. Using them as rental, I think I listened in on the planning commission meeting and ownership is, is mentioned by Brandon, they really honed in on. It was interesting, the number of homes that are being bought, that are pushing out those who want homeownership. It also indicate there's 20,000 homes that have been bought by investors that are being used as short-term rentals, which is half of the shortage. I can't recall if. The residents came into this meeting of the planning commission, if you'll recall. There were a number of residents that came and were against this, I believe this is motivated by a home on the corner. Where the parents recently died and they wanted to rebuild that corner, just as a refresher. John, did you, did you have a comment?
What Councilman Swanson said was correct, there was this discussion and it tied to that twin home that's right on the corner of 750 and 2600, that it doesn't fit. And that was kind of the comment, is it, it was ugly, it doesn't fit the neighborhood, and this is going to go everywhere in this area. Was kind of the comment from the time, if I remember right, it was 2014 or 15.
Is this the same area where the residents were saying the 10plex is, the kind of stuff somehow? Councilmember Swanson, did you have a comment?
I've just got some, some questions. As I read through this and as Brandon, thank you for your presentation, as I listened to that. I'm trying to understand what is accomplished by having. Effectively two buildings built on separate lots, but joined together on the property line. I can see that that allows the builder to build a larger building, because now they only have to meet setbacks on one lateral side. So I can get away with, you know, if I'm an investor building, I can build a bigger building, each side can have more square feet because. I can now go from the property line, right on the property line, all the way to whatever the setback is on the opposite side. And, and I don't understand how that benefits the city. I'm not clear, well, let's address that one first. What, what, what is, what's, what's gained by having, what's?
So I would, I would state that the converse that they're, I believe your statement is that they're able to use more of the property, which is accurate, but. The converse of it, I think, is that they are able to have smaller lots, so there's lower land costs per dwelling. The, in the, in the ordinance that's proposed, it would be 5,000 square foot would be the minimum size. And we, we ground truth that to other properties in the zone that are already built and also did some other measures to, to figure out that number. Whereas I don't have the standard zone, I think it's 10,000 square foot in the RCC zone. I could be off by 1,000 square foot or shit, but, so it's, it's a significantly smaller lot, so it's, would be smaller land cost.
I'm still not understanding, though, what the advantage is. If we, if we pass an ordinance that said we can take a 10,000 square foot lot in the RCC zone and divide it into two 5,000 square foot lots and give you an R5 zoning on each. We still end up with two dwellings on 5,000 square foot lots. The only difference is both of those dwellings will now be smaller because they've got to meet. Smaller means more affordable. Smaller on, because they've got to meet setbacks on both sides of the property, building to property line setback and setbacks between the buildings, which is eliminated by this ordinance. I'm still not seeing why there's, and how there's an advantage to the city.
That's, staff, in the end, that's up for the city council to determine. But our recommendation is that this is a relatively low-impact way to increase the affordability of housing in the area.
Okay.
Can I ask, answer something to that?
Go ahead, Councilmember Barker.
Yeah. In my opinion, it's cheaper to build one building than two, even if they're the same size, I mean, the same square footage, if you put them together and build them all at once, it's cheaper. So that'll bring the cost down, and if you put them on the property line, now you're allowing for homeownership, where if there's no property line, you can't sell them. A twin home will be a rental if it's on one parcel.
I think that's the key.
So if it's on the property line, now you can sell each individual lot and actually allow for homeownership.
And I think that's the key that the planning commission called in on is ownership, all ownership. That was the main discussion. And I think that's a concern in the state too. That a lot of these units that are being built, that are being. You know, taken up by investors are preventing homeownership, because they become investments and rental, so. Councilmember Swanson?
Thank you for your input, but wouldn't that still be accomplished if we just allow a 10,000 square foot lot in the RCC to be subdivided into two 5,000 square foot lots? And two small, single-family detached homes be built? Wouldn't that lend itself, I mean, the homes have to be smaller because of setbacks. Which means they're going to be less expensive. Aren't we, well, I, I think the twin home lends itself, not to ownership, but to rental. It, it, to me, it lends itself to an investor coming in and saying, I'm going to buy this lot. Subdivide it into two, build a twin home and rent the two sides out. That's just, as I was reading through this, what kept going through my mind?
There, there are advantages to, to detached, separate units. You know, in that you still have a buffer between the two properties. On the, on the flip side, an advantage to a, to family dwelling that's attached over a shared property line. It's just that it would be more likely to look like more, it has a potential. It's just that it would be more likely to look like more, it has the potential to look. More likely a, a single family home. It's a similar size and scale as a, as, as other single family homes in the. In this area, so there's plus and minus as both.
One last question if I may, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would this, i- in subdividing into two lots. With a single building that straddles the lot line, how, what would happen with impact fees? Are there two impact fees or there one?
There, there was, well, the way we stated it is that there's one building permit. I hadn't, I had assumed that there'd be one set of impact fees, but I, we would probably have to. Address, I don't, I think we have to address that in the ordinance. But John, go ahead.
There, so there'd be two. There's a potential for a modification. Our current ordinance gives a multi-family discount. Say typically smaller family units. And so we'd probably do an analysis on the unit size. If it was two four bedroom houses attached, probably charge a full impact fee for each. If it was two, two bedroom houses attached, it'd be a half, or it's not quite a half, it's like seventy percent.
And Brendan, there would be two partial liking numbers, right?
That's correct.
And what other questions, council member Barker?
Is the RCC zone, that zone had the most two families own or duplexes in it right now?
Uh, that's a hard question to answer. It might be, but it's hard to say because it's so small compared to. Others, there's like, there's a lot of attached units actually in Lakeview Heights. Um, that were there, I, we believe prior to the application of the R one ten zone. Um, and those actually blend, I, I drove up around them a few weeks ago. They actually blend really well into. The neighborhood. There's a lot of them that you actually wouldn't know that they're two family dwellings because they're designed so that. One, there're, there's some corner lot ones where one entrance faces one street and the other entrance faces another street, so. It, it may actually have fewer than say the R one ten zone because of that.
JD has a comment.
Okay, let's hear from JD.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Okay. So I just wanted to remind everyone, just because this, this has been going back and forth for a few years. Um, one of the things that the mayor mentioned, I think he was starting to talk about was. At approximately four fifty east and twenty six fifty north. Um, that was a lot of the discussion that a lot of residents and neighbors to this area came in. Uh, to several meetings in the past to provide comments on that. So approximately, I don't know if it's been fifteen, twenty years ago. There were apartments that were kind of crammed behind twenty six fifty north and four fifty east. And so I think that that was kind of the beginning of a lot of the neighbors and residences starting to try to get more. More and more involved in, in input for this neighborhood. And I can recall just in the last couple of years, several meetings where. They showed up and provide feed, provided feedback. I think it was one of the planning commission meetings where. Um, a person that lived on four fifty east at approximately twenty six fifty north. Um, showed up and he had a pretty strong opinion. Um, about, you know, allowing ADUs. He was, he was very supportive of supporting ADUs. And wasn't as supportive of, of two family dwellings. Um, so that's just one thought. And then the other thought was. Uh, if we are concerned about providing more quote unquote affordable housing. Um, I see that that's definitely something that's pressing for the state and for our city. But aren't we already, aren't, aren't we already providing a lot of that with some of the build out with. Uh, Village at Prominence Point and Patriot Point and several other areas. So that's just my comment.
Thank you, council member Dowpas. I'm sure the council is fully aware of this. But we are experimenting with new affordable housing over on the Century Farms piece. So what other comments or questions you have for Brandon before we seek a motion on this? Council member Extron, do you have a?
Yes, just a question. So when I, I think about, you know, this part of town. There's, there's a, quite a lot of multifamily housing in there, correct?
I mean, that. There's, well, it depends on how you define this part of town, but there is in, in the RCC zone in particular, there, there are a few. Uh, twin homes currently. And then this, if you expand this part of town to, to the downtown area, maybe. Half mile or three quarters of mile north and south of twenty six hundred, there's quite a bit of multifamily in that area that's. Either built or being scheduled to be built.
Okay, so what I see kind of happening here is that, you know, this is a really convenient place to live, especially to be able to walk. To get to commercial, right? And, and it's very close to school. It's, it's, it's really, really convenient. So it's kind of like, we've got to choose. Are we going to make it? I mean, I think about, you know, I lived in San Antonio, right? And, and that area downtown was very much preserved. Right? It's like, we want to, we want to preserve this feeling. And so they did not allow a whole bunch of building. That would be really convenient to walk to everything because they wanted to preserve the feeling of what Alamo Heights felt like, right? And so that's what I'm kind of. Wanting us to kind of think about, are we going to kind of try and preserve? Because there's like, you know, old pioneer homes in there. There's. You know, some big lot things, you know, do we want to preserve that? Or we want to say, oh, we want to. Get as many people in the most convenient spot we can and maybe alleviate some traffic so that. You know, everybody that is going to go live at Prominence Point or, you know, doesn't have to drive everywhere. So, you know, that's, that's kind of what's weighing on. On my mind. I don't know any thoughts.
Uh, I appreciate your comments, council member Extron. I think somebody once referred to this area as the avenues of North Hollywood. Because it does have some historical homes and things there, but, you know, those are the issues that we need to address, so. Uh, council, if there's no other questions, there's a motion for us to approve this ordinance, which would amend. The two family dwellings in the RCC zone. Do we have a motion? To amend this ordinance, to pass this ordinance to amend this zone? I am not seeing a motion, so I guess it would die for lack of a motion. So that would mean that the recommendation. To resolve this is not passed. Thank you, Brandon, for your research, your excellent presentation there. Very informative. Okay, let's move on to item number six on our agenda. This will be led by John Call. Cindy Mound's attorney. This is regarding the issuance of the bond. Public safety building, John?
Thank you, mayor. So, uh, council, you've discussed this quite a bit. Last, uh, week we talked about it, um, and we talked about it the previous week as well on what we're doing for the bond approval. Um, currently as it stands, the city has done the appropriate hearings and paperwork. To issue up to ten and a half million dollars in bond. Um, and has currently only issued six point seven five million of that. As we'll talk about in the next agenda item, the costs for the building have come in higher than we anticipated and higher than I think the contractor. And the architect anticipated, based on materials, not based on, uh, building a Taj Mahal. Uh, based on building the facility, we need just materials more expensive. And so the question for the council is how much would you like to bond for, if any additional? And what authorization would you like to give the mayor in signing those documents? Uh, we do have Mark Anderson with Science Bank here, who's our financial advisor slash consultant. He has done some work to, uh, get information from several bond providers. Who would do what we typically would be called a private placement bond. Of, of various rates, although as you may know, the rates are growing, increasing. And so whatever, whatever direction the council would like to go, uh, because of the volatility in the bond market, for example, when we issued the first bond. We were able to do a rate lock for thirty days. Uh, currently the rate lock, rate lock time is fourteen days. And so it's a, it's a whole different world we're in. The rates that we're seeing right now will likely be a little north of four percent. Is higher than the original bond of, I think, one point nine five percent. But it is for a smaller amount, if assuming the council wants to go that direction. Mark can answer any questions. Um, we do have at least three options. Or three different vendors, all with different rates. I'm going to speak for Jamie, maybe Jamie can speak for herself, but I think in our conversation, staff would recommend going with the same company we've already used. It eliminates the need for a trustee and what they've offered us is a callable bond, meaning there's no timeframe. We can pay it off in two years if we wanted to. We don't have to hold it for ten years, or I think the other one was eight years. So that usually if that's the case, then what you have to do is you have to keep making payments till you hit that eight or ten year. Um, and then you can pay it off, but this would allow us to pay it off early with no penalty, plus avoid the cost of the trustee. So Jamie, obviously the mayor understands this, Mark is here, what questions?
From my understanding, the original bond that we could literally pay off the lowest tranche at any time. Didn't have to wait eight years, but we had to pay off the, the shortest, lowest interest rate term, if that's correct. That would be the same case here. You could call the bond and hold at any time. Right, but we can pay off tranches. As so stated there, my understanding is though you still make the same payment. On the bond, even if you pay off one of the tranches was my understanding. Yes, four percent. John, do we know what the, uh, the payments would be? Based upon. If the borrowings at that rate, have we got an amortization schedule, Mark? Uh, the council might want to know that. I sent an amortization schedule to John earlier today. This anticipated a borrowing of. Three point seven five million, the maximum that you might consider over a twenty year term. And I would estimate payments at approximately four percent, that'd be about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for twenty years. So now we put our total payment of about six seventy, I believe that's four ten on the other one. And the, the payment dates would coincide with the existing bond principal payments in November is the way it's been structured. Ten and O B right now. Council, questions you have for Mark? I, I wish I had an interest rate for you that was lockable, that you could visualize right now. Jared Anderson with Bank of Utah has a son being married today and was unable to provide that for us. If, if that's a route that you wanted to pursue. Uh, I can notify him tonight that we would, that the city's interested in locking a rate subject to the mayor's approval. Once we see what the final rate is. And, and we can go from there. That would be available tomorrow. Jamie, how much, refresh my memory if you would, how much cash? Think we're estimating with contingency, John, just for the council's benefit. Right around fourteen million, that includes a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Is this, this great slide, Jamie?
We've got seven point five million. Used everything we have, pretty much. A ten million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond. I'm calculating this right. Ten million five. That would give us funds of eighteen million. Able to build a fourteen million dollar building. So the question is, how much do you want to borrow? I was just asking Jamie to confirm that, that does leave the million dollars. Threshold to capital projects fund. And it doesn't touch the general fund balance. Fifteen percent. So council, the question is, how much would you like to borrow additionally?
Mayor?
Council member Dowpas.
I had a question for Mark. I don't know if he's still standing up there or not, but, uh, I. How closely are the bond rates tied to what the Federal Reserve does? I, I think there's some impact there, right? So tomorrow. It's anticipated the, the Fed will raise rates by point seven five or maybe more. So it seems like time is of the essence to obviously make a decision, but does, does Mark know any information about that? How, how's that affected?
There certainly is a relationship there. In the last, uh, three days, we've seen. Treasury rates on the average move about fifty basis points or a half a percent. What we refer to as the triple A MMD, which is the municipal market data on. Kind of the base for how bonds are priced and then you have spreads based on the different ratings. That a bond might acquire. We've seen those move up about forty basis points. In the last three days as well. So I anticipate that the market has priced in. Uh, to a certain extent, what they anticipate the Federal Reserve will do tomorrow. So I don't. Council, what questions?
I, I don't have any questions, I, I, as I've expressed before. While we do have these additional funds, I'm not convinced that. By the time this whole thing is said and done, that we're, that we're not going to have to tap into these anyway. Uh, to get this building built with, just, I was looking earlier today, wholesale inflation's now hit ten point eight percent. Inflation is rampant right now and we're seeing it everywhere in every aspect. Uh, what we do understand and what we are very clear on is that we need this public safety building. I think for me, the wise thing to do is to borrow the three point seven five million. And preserve these funds for any other. Materials increases or anything else that we see between now and the time we start digging a hole and. Uh, get the building built and get, you know, obviously we'll buy what materials we can ahead of time and store them. Uh, but that won't protect us from all the increases that I think still lie ahead.
John, maybe just to clarify something, is this a guaranteed maximum price?
In the contract, there's a guaranteed maximum price and there is a hundred and fifty thousand contingency for materials and fluctuations.
So that would be a guaranteed maximum price, council member Swanson. You know, there is always the possibility that we would run into some unknown factor when we start digging them in the ground.
Which we've already experienced, right, with the helium appears that we now have to put in.
Yeah, which is, is in the.
Right, but that's one of those things that as we start digging, we, oh, by the way, now we've got to put peers in.
This is just my thought. Um, you know, with interest rates where they're at a four percent. And, uh, having really eighteen million dollars, that would give us a four million dollar plus six fifty. We have basically. Four point six million dollars of, uh. And having really eighteen million dollars, that would give us a four million dollar plus six fifty, we have basically four point six million dollars of as Councilmember Rex said, wibble room, I would just ask the council to maybe consider going with, you know, I'm all pretty much dead at Versailles, I'm not there, but just want to make sure we have all the facts as the council decides which direction they want to go. I would like us to focus, I know there's other things coming down the pike that we want to do. Something we need to do, so I would hope we could just focus on the needs of this right now while maintaining thresholds we put, I agree, Councilmember Swanson, there's some, some unknowns even on having a seven point five available. There's some that's highly probable, there's some that are a little bit shaky, so to speak, but anyway, whatever the council member, seven.
Mayor, I would like to hear your thoughts on this, do you have a recommendation?
I do, I, I think we would, I don't want to be controversial here, but I, I don't think we need, and I could be wrong, you know, I'm pretty conservative. I, I don't think we need to go the, particularly with the four percent rate. You know, we were talking about having cheap money before, four percent still sounds pretty cheap, but not as cheap as one point nine, so to speak. So my recommendation is that we give ourselves adequate room. You know, maybe two million, two point two million, something of that nature, but just my thought, I'll support whatever you want to do, but I just think, you know, that's, that's a pretty big payment to commit to. We're ten plus two seventy, Mark, did you say, estimate? So we're at six seventy, and we know we've got some other elements coming down the road that we're going to have to maybe step up to outside of the R D A. Just my feeling, Councilmember Severin, but.
So your recommendation would change that three million, seven, seven fifty to what?
I'm saying like two point two million in that range, that kind of, I think, still gives us, but I, I appreciate Jamie's, she's the finance person, at least input. Obviously, the council is the one that has the, what to say, but, you know, you can be conservative on both sides, right? You can have big cushions to keep, but when you're talking about debt, I'm not sure the citizens are wanting to have excess funds, but go ahead, Jamie, if you have it. You know, that's fine.
I really don't, my only concern is just moving forward with some of the other projects that the city's committed to. Like the community pond parks project, century farms project, those kinds of things that we're committed to. And we don't really have final costs to manage either. So those are my conservative thoughts there.
Now, in this available funds, have we estimated the cost for the Patriot Park? In seven point five, because my concern is, as I stated earlier, I think we separate this, if you want to borrow for parks and borrow for parks. But I think this ought to be based on borrowing for the public safety building, just my thought. So thanks, Jamie. John, you have a thought you'd like to share, of course regarding this subject?
So it's not just like deep thoughts?
Yeah.
I, it's, the only thing I can, I think, no matter what we can do, it sounds like we know we can, we can put the money together to get the project going, and that's my biggest concern, because we need the building. I'm super conservative, I think one of the nice things we're going to be seeing is some of our P T F, P T I F returns will come back. They're not going to be great, so much of that's based in the stock market, that's where the majority of our money's held, because on the, in the audience who maybe don't know that. But I honestly, I probably lean more towards the three million if it was me. I just like the extra cushion, but I'm, I also hate borrowing, so I, it's, it's hard to kind of really pick a spot on this, other than I just, I want to have the money for the building.
I think we've got that, and I, I just wanted to clarify with Councilmember Swanson that this is a guaranteed maximum price. You've gone out, got bids. I think there was two items, we were the sewer and one other item that we were estimating somewhere, John, between eighty and a hundred and fifty thousand. But those are building to your estimate, so.
Yeah.
But that's, that's my thought, is I, I think everybody knows where I stand on the building. There's two things pretty firm on, but something's going to have to knock me upside the head, is one is this building, and one is making sure that our employees are fairly compensated. I'm open for discussion on most other things, but pretty firm on those, but just my, my opinion, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that some of that risk that we were concerned about has been in my, so anyways, Councilmember Swanson.
I would personally like to hear from each council member their own analysis, before we decide what we're going to do, what they've been thinking and how they've arrived at, at what they're thinking.
Perfect, let's start with Councilmember Dalpas.
I think what's difficult for all of us is that nobody has the crystal ball to say exactly what's going to happen. But I am extremely concerned about the inflation, we had all time high numbers that just came out, ten, eight point five percent C P I. So, I mean, I'm just thinking, maybe we can thread the needle between what the, the mayor is thinking and what Phil is thinking. If we did a total bond amount of like ten million dollars, that kind of gives us a little bit extra comfort that we have more to lean on if costs continue to go crazy like they may, but maybe not all the way. So I don't know exactly how much that would save in the budget for the annual spend, but I'm sure it would save at least a little to make us feel a little bit more comfortable, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Thanks, Councilmember Dalpas, I just want to reiterate that we have a guaranteed maximum price here. So inflation shouldn't catch us. We've carried a contingency for as best as we can guess on things that can't be locked in currently because of the volatility of the market. And we, we've added another five hundred thousand in a contingency, so we do have six fifty. But we should have some protection against inflation with this guaranteed maximum price. Yeah, and I think with contingencies that have been discussed, we should be, should be good, so. Of course, John's eight balls is functioning, let's go with you, Councilmember Barker.
I'm actually leaning more towards your recommendation of two point two, where would you have a guaranteed price? I, in my construction days, I learned no matter what your budget is, you spend it, so whatever we borrow, we will spend. And I'm not saying that if we borrow less than, you know, buy cheaper stuff, but if we borrow more, it will get spent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Swanson, would you like to go?
You've heard mine.
Okay, you've heard you. Councilmember Severin.
I think there's, there's wisdom in both recommendations. So I'm a little bit, because I'm not, I'm, I'm dead adverse myself. On the flip side, I think there's wisdom in having extra money, because we just don't know what's going to happen. We, we may have control over, no extra cost, costs with that building, but do we have those guarantees with anything else? That's what I worry about.
That's my question, should we be borrowing for anything else? Should we be mixing that in with financing of the public safety building? Or do we address that issue, as we mentioned briefly last minute, do we address that separately?
Well, it, it's important to remember too, though, that we've already taken four million dollars out of city coffers that had been saved towards this building, right?
Well, sort of, we kind of got some ARPA money of about two million.
Yeah.
So basically, we take that into effect.
What, what I'm saying though is that, and I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm saying with the, the complete picture, we've already reduced funds that might have been used for other long-term projects in order to not borrow as much as possible. And, and so we're, I, I think we've already been conservative, not that we can't be more conservative, but I think we've already been conservative to a pretty strong degree, in that way, using monies that we already have.
So.
Go ahead, Councilman Severin.
Well, I'd like to hear what Councilwoman Extron has to say.
I'd like to hear your conclusion first. Rather than waiting on everybody else, I'd like to hear your conclusion.
Well, I, here's my thought with the collaboration, I like the collaboration, it may just be that Councilwoman Extron says something that tips me one way or another.
But you might say something that tips her one way.
I did, I said both sides have wisdom, there's wisdom.
What would you recommend, what, what dollar?
I would probably, okay, pin me down, but I reserve the right to change that, but right now, my initial thought is I would probably meet in the middle, I think Councilman Dalpas's idea, it kind of gives us, it gives us extra on both sides, one to put down on debt and one to be prepared, so.
Okay, Councilwoman Extron.
Okay, and, and thinking it over, I, I really want to make sure that we have adequate, I don't want this to end up being a project that goes into being penny wise and pound foolish, because we try to be a little too conservative. And it's not that we're, you know, trying to be extravagant, we're trying to just predict as best we can. So my, was, and, you know, and I surround free. So I think if we get another three million dollars, then we're not dipping so far and, and trying to nickel and dime every other department as well to say, oh, but we, but we've got to do this over here. So I'm, I'm trying to just think through how much is going to be needed, and how much our departments have been asked to just live bare bones all the time. Because I, I really have faith in our other departments as far as their ability and willingness to scrim and save and come in under budget, which they have pretty much consistently, all of them have. And so I'd like to give them just even a little bit of breathing room, so that's, that's kind of my number of street.
Let me just, some additional information to make a decision to consider, this is a reminder, we have tried to look long term budgeting process as we build the capital projects funds. Going forward, if you recall, the budgeting does provide for that with twenty percent of any excess being set aside for future parks or and ten percent for maintenance, and then the other seventy percent available for the type of projects that haven't been identified. And just as a reminder, the debt payment then will have an effect on the property tax rate that is, because we will have to make approximately ten sixty thousand dollar greater payment. So we are faced then with either continuing to build the capital projects fund as we budget it, cutting that back, or facing the property tax issue, so, okay, are there any other comments?
Just a reminder to, should we, you know, find ourselves having borrowed more than what we ultimately lead, because we have a non-callable bond, we can pay it back, it's not like we're, the payment stays the same, understand that, but we can, we can, we can at least, you know, pay back the money, yeah, what?
If you remember, the last time we borrowed, we had a provision that included a strip call.
Right, right.
That gave the city twelve months to return any funds that they deemed to be excess. Really haven't had that conversation with Bank of Utah on this particular issue, or, but I think it's a conversation I could have to say, you know, the city would like to borrow X number of dollars and still would like to have the right to return some of these funds within a twelve month period, say to a maximum of a million dollars or something like that. And the way the strip call works is it's equally applied against all future payments, so it reduces all future payments. And that might give you some level of comfort, if we can have that as an available option from the bank, as you.
As you'll recall, we had that discussion, we thought we had a substantial amount on that strip call, as you'll recall. Actually ended up talking with Doug DeFreez and Taff Meyer, Bank of Utah. And they cut that back to two hundred and fifty thousand on six point, six point seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I think that would be good to know, we could shortly do a authorization tonight based upon the ability to do that, because that would make a substantial difference if we could pay that back without having to commit the city to a larger payment for twenty years.
One other thing I might mention is if we have a pretty good estimate of what the bond spend now is going to be, we have some better options right now to invest some of the bond proceeds with treasuries moving as quickly as they are, you can probably invest for six months and be close to two percent. The P T F last month was a point seven nine percent, it's slowly climbing, but, but if you had a, a good ideas to how the funds would flow for the construction building, to tax them and how to get them yielded.
And I think we need to be careful, my understanding is we have to justify that all bond funds we use for.
That's correct, when, when we talk about projects, there's a specific scope as to where the bond fund, the bond money proceeds can be used. But that, but I think the thought in mind is that the more the bond that's used, the less pressure it puts on reserves that would like to affect other projects the city has in mind.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
John, what is the projected time of completion for the building?
The original time was twelve months.
So that strip call is just based on, on the projected completion of the building?
It was on the issue date.
It was on the issue day.
We're getting close to about six months left on that strip.
Almost December fifteenth.
So we technically only have, because some of this material is above my ability to, it's above my pay grade, so we would only really be able to exercise a six month?
Well, we, we would be, we know we'd be using the six million, seven fifty, I think it's on the new, the new money, because we, we know that with costs the way they are now, we'd be using the entire six million, seven fifty.
And you wouldn't want to return any of the six million.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's, let's seek a motion on this, if somebody would like to make a motion, that would be the time to do so. What we're seeking here is authorization to bond, I think we, John, we had authorization to go up to ten point five million. But the council settled at six, seven fifty. I don't know if they authorized up to the ten point five million, if that would authorize the mayor to sign a certain amount, but probably good to have what you'd like me to do, is I sign that document, so let's, let's look for a motion on increasing the bond amount of six million, seven fifty to a certain dollar amount that you'd like us to negotiate with Bank of Utah. Got some other thoughts?
Mayor, I'll make a motion in the, I'm with you, I don't like debt, I don't have it in my personal life. And, you know, it's, try to minimize it, save, and I think we've done a good job as a city, saving for these kinds of projects and things like that. I'm also a cushion guy. I, I love cushions, I love having cushions in my personal accounts, I love having cushions. I can see the, the wisdom that's been brought forth on all sides. I'm going to suggest that we, that we borrow an additional two point seven five million. I think that will assuage those of us that are seeking a little bit more cushion. And at the same time, it, you know, it's a, it's a full million, almost a full million dollars less than what I would ultimately think would be the wisest thing for us to do, in my cushion driven mind. So I'm going to recommend that we, so that would take us six, seven, five, eight, seven. So I'm going to recommend that we, so that would take us 6, 7, 5, 8, 7, 5, 950, 9.5. So I would suggest that we take the bond to 9,500,000.
I have a motion from Councilmember Swanson to increase the bond amount to 9.5 million dollars. And the second, Councilmember Extron. I think due to the fact that Councilmember Dowpas is on Zoom, I'm going to ask for a vote here individually. Councilmember Dowpas, we don't hear the motion and is your vote yes or no on this?
I say yes.
Yes? Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved to increase the bond amount to 9.5 million total. Two separate bonds, one of 2 million 750,000, the other of 6750. And Mark, if you could just double check on that on the strip call, just to give us some cushion.
And that .75 interest rate.
It's moving quickly. So thank you, council, for that. Mark, thank you for joining us this evening and your comments. So let us know.
I'll send an email to Jared tonight and I expect to see new race and warning.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Let's move on then to, well, did I see Pat come in? At your, I am on the agenda was tabled.
Mayor?
Councilmember Barker, I'm sorry.
Should we discuss seven since it goes with what we were just discussing and then we'll go to Pat?
Yeah, we can do that. I just thought the motion to table was, since he came in, but we'll, we can go to seven.
Just in a discussion flows.
Flow's important, yes. We will go on to item number seven. I think we've kind of had a somewhat of a discussion about that contract being a guaranteed maximum price and the amount in there, but let's go ahead and have John call our city manager present to us and we'll have a discussion to consider an action to sign an agreement with Big D Construction for the design and, and construction of the public safety building. This would be, I believe, agreement A09-2022. Is that incorrect, Susan? So John?
Thank you, Mayor. So we do have Blaine and Kenton from Big D here. Mark is the one who edited most of the contract words, but he had a contract work with, he had a previous commitment, so he couldn't be here. But I know Blaine and Kenton are well equipped to walk us through this. The contract, as you know, was quite long. It's 40 pages. It also includes this attachment, which is another nine pages that goes through the actual financial part of it. I'm going to zoom in so that everybody can see it. This is the cost breakdown of what the building is going to cost the city. There are, for the, the basic structure that we originally contemplated, the cost is 2.25 million, so 2,250, $260,000. And then since that time, we, we've already had two change orders. One is this, this is a level four facility, meaning it will stand with an earthquake up to 7.5?
Correction, it's 12. You said 2 million, it's 12.
Oh, sorry, yeah, 12 million.
I was going to say an earthquake of 12, that's quite a building.
I was trying to negotiate $10 million.
See, I told you Blaine's sharp. But it'll be, it's level four facility, meaning it will withstand an earthquake, meaning it will still be operational. It, there will be no interruption service except for what might happen outside of the facility. So we plan to include a generator so that it can operate independently for as many days as we have diesel fuel to keep it running. And then the other one is some upgrades to the security access system. Most of the increases in costs over, as we designed and worked through it, are in the site preparation, the, and the structural work. We've, we've, we talked about the GO peers were mentioned earlier. Though that was something that was done as the soil study came in. Our, our friction coefficient wasn't good enough in that 7.5 earthquake to hold the foundation in place. So basically going to put a bunch of gravel in the ground and provide the stability that the building needs before they put the foundation in. It's a pretty intensive process, yeah.
Is that water? Is that, because it's kind of boggy over there? Is that kind of what is making that?
It's a multiple of different factors. So there's not any one single thing that contributes to it, but obviously organic material is one of the things that, that produces those coefficients and things. You'd need a, a soil engineer to really tell you, because clay does a different thing than a sandy soil, you know, so it's just kind of, and we were really close on the number, but again, this is a building that can't fall down. Like, we can't have it fall down, obviously. But, so anyways, we just, we're erring on the side of caution as recommended by the structural engineer. But so this, this is the, the increase. This number originally was closer to 9.6 million. There was, and as was mentioned, there's a $150,000 price increase in materials in contingency in this agreement that is essentially at the discretion of the design builder. They would need to, talking with Mark today, they would be providing us with the paperwork that justifies, you know, if, if lumber went up by a certain amount, you know, and the bid package came in at $10,000 higher, that would just, that would, we'd get the paperwork and that expense would be authorized. Same thing with drywall or anything else that came in. With their subcontractors and the ones they're working with, they are committing to their prices through the end of June, meaning that essentially the labor costs won't change. It's that increase in the materials that will be the, the issue.
End of June has in two weeks?
Yes. So meaning we need to, we need to sign the contract before the end of June to lock it in. So think of it as a letter of rate. As, as you saw in the agreement, it is, it is very expensive. It covers a, a huge range of items. Me and the mayor have gone through it three times. I talked with Mark again about a few final questions that we had. And the, there's a few changes in this agreement since you saw it. The, the, the first one is in section 4.9, and this was to align better with the council's authorization as we proceeded forward, which was, sorry, you know, it's a big document. This, this paragraph now includes some language that says, just want to make sure I give you the exact right language. At the very end, so the owner's representatives are John Call and Mayor Berube. And essentially, we are authorized to do a change order up to 25,000. And then in any change order over that would be authorized by the individuals who used to be on the Public Safety Committee. There was three individuals. They would need to sign off on the increase in addition to the mayor and myself. And they would have to stay within the parameters that the council has set of that additional $500,000 city contingency side of the budget. So that would be if we ran into something, another issue with soils. Many of you know that sometimes people digging in the hillsides hit springs. I don't think we're going to hit another one that we aren't aware of. But those are the type of things that, that this would allow for is the, the control on the, the city side would be placed in the hands of those five individuals, which is, you know, the mayor, myself, and then the, the three members of, that were on the selection committee. And then, and then one of the other changes is the, and this, this agreement is long. And we included all the notes so the council could see some of the back and forth and some of the discussions as you went through the contract. This is one of those things in document of Mark that's changed today. A change to the, the retainage that it would be for the full amount. Meaning that, you know, we, we, we could retain 5% of the full contract cost until the end of the project. That, that allows for us, if there's a defect or an issue, we can cover it as well as keep some skin in the game of the contractors and the subcontractors. We do have the option in these others that if there is a, if there is a trade, let's say the soil, the guys who are moving all the dirt around, when they do their, their final grading and they've got it ready for foundation and backfilling is finished and that sort of thing, we have the option that if we're satisfied, we can release it, but we're not obligated to. Just to put that in perspective, but it keeps a little skin in the game for all the subcontractors. And then the last thing that me and Mark really hit on a lot today was the, the insurance amounts. So there's some liability coverage for employers. There's a builder's risk policy. So the employer's liability deals with employees who are on the job that are employed by the contractor. They also require their subcontractors to have liability. And based on my conversation with Mark, this is the same, which is basically a million dollars per incident. You know, which is essentially for the employees. Workers comp also comes in on these if there's a workplace injury, which they are required to have under this contract. And then the other thing that we talked on balls over, things like that. And our insurance agent and Big D's insurance folks are going to talk and see if which one's the best rate and make sure that we've got the right deductibles and things. But that's, that's an option that me and the mayor will work with Big D on selecting the right builder's risk policy. Trying to think what else needs, what I need to chat about.
John, you might want to make the council aware of the opportunity and value engineering, which Big D is, has a history of doing a good job there. How that might affect things. We had a conversation, I think, about that too, how we would identify potential savings for value engineering and how that would be split.
Yeah, so let me, let me find that language for you. So it's right here. Essentially that if, if Big D can provide some additional cost savings over what they've shown us on the GMP and they come in lower than this maximum price guarantee, then they would be entitled to receive half of those savings, essentially as a kind of a bonus for bringing in and, and coming in with good ideas. Obviously, the fear is, well, they, they push the price up to get the savings. I, I can assure you with working with this group, that's not the, the, the case. Blaine and his, his workers in particular have spent probably a month pounding through the subcontractors and working them on price and working them and working them. In fact, some of these items that are on this list have actually gone down in price since the original bid. I believe carpentry was one of those that I noticed, the original contract with, or the original estimate was for 1.5 and now it's at 1.3. Don't quote me exactly on those numbers, but some of these have come down because of the work that, that Blaine and his team have been doing.
John, don't you think by the time we get started on this, that they'll be paying us to take lumber?
But what, so what it does is they would get 50% of the savings. The city would get 50% of the savings. There is a catch in there because this contract doesn't include liquidated damages, which basically is that if you don't get done by this day, you owe us this much money because the city will lose money. Those provisions are problematic and even more problematic for us because we don't actually lose money because we have a building that's paid for. But, so it's tied into this share, this 50% share saving share. If they don't meet the, the deadline for the contract, then they lose the opportunity for their 50% and the city keeps it all. So my expectation from Big D is that we will meet our deadlines because I, they're, they've got the resources to strongarm the subcontractors to show up and finish the project.
As long as it's not cemented building.
But I, I think it'd be good, council, for, you know, Blaine or Kenton to come up and provide you with any information or answer questions for you. They do this all the time. Could probably give you more information than I can.
Council, do you see a need to hear from them? Are you okay with what's been explained? John, I would say, I know John has gone back and forth. I appreciate his efforts and also efforts. I think it's indicative that an official partnership is kind of, we've worked together to knock out some of these things and stake some contracts, so. Okay, I don't see any additional questions then. So looks like Ken Blaine are off the hook, but we would need to have a motion to approve the agreement with Big D Construction for the side. Did you have a comment first, Councilman? Do you just want to make the motion?
I was just going to make the motion.
I'm going to make the motion.
I was too, so.
Well, while you three are talking about it.
A09-2022. So we have a motion to approve the contract and we have a second.
A second?
That was second by Councilmember Severin. Is there any further discussion about this matter? I see now you'll take a real call vote. Start with you, Councilmember. Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations to City Council.
One final comment, Mayor. We will be working with Big D to schedule the groundbreaking, so we will start, let us, if you know when your vacations are, please send them to me and Susan so we can make sure that we coordinate. Because it'll, it'll start happening fast.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you, council. We'll now go to our tabled item, which was originally item number three on our agenda. This discussion will also be led by Brandon Bell, our associate planner. This is an item regarding discussion to consider an ordinance to resolve property 2067 North Washington Board from community commercial to multifamily residential. So Brandon, would you like to?
Mayor, members of council again. This is, so I'm just kind of a housekeeping note. This community commercial is the re-titled name for what, for the zone that used to be C2 on our zoning map with the adoption of the reorganized zoning code, that name was changed. So, and then before I begin my report, John, could you pull up the third page of the report and where it says zoning map excerpt? Just show the zoning map there so that we have that available to refer to. And then if you could maybe also have ready aerial photography from, I guess, well, I guess we've got an aerial photo there, but if you, if you could pull up Google Maps as well and, and there's street view of those townhomes, that might be helpful as well. So the request from the applicant is to rezone property from community commercial to multifamily residential, which is the R4 zone. This is also a legislative decision. The, the planning commission has provided a recommendation to the city council regarding this, which they're required to on, on legislative decisions. And the, regarding the property that's, that they have to have rezoned, they've recorded meets and balance parcel at the county, but that has not been legally approved by the city. And so that's an action that would need to occur related to this rezone. So I'll discuss that a little bit. They, in order for the, for the parcel to be a legally recognized parcel in North Ogden and for further development to occur on it, it needs to go through, be recorded at the county, but, but approved by the city prior to that recordation. And so that's a that's a process or loophole that needs to be corrected in this situation. And and further comment on that that issue is that the exact size of the parcel that needs to be legally subdivided and and rezoned will be determined by the applicable site development standard of the R4 zone as part of site plan review approval. So that's a second land use action that needs to occur on this as well, which is that a site plan approval needs to occur. And so the size of the subdivision needs to be determined by the site plan. And then the size of the rezone needs to be determined by the subdivision. So it's a there's a little bit of nesting dolls here, right? So what we're saying is that if you choose to rezone this property, it's written into the ordinance that says the exact size and shape of the parcel will be determined by those two other actions which have not yet occurred. But we've we've written them in as contingencies into the ordinance to say, you know, the boundaries of this will shift a little bit. If that makes, if I'm explaining that correctly, so. There are there are guidelines in our general plan for rezones that provide criteria for any decision making regarding a rezone. I'm going to go ahead and read those guidelines and then staff comment on those guidelines. So the first of the guidelines is that a definite edge should be established between the types of uses to protect the integrity of each use, except where mixing of uses is recommended in the general plan. Staff comment on this is that the proposed use does not, which is, which would be with the townhomes at current. They they're proposing townhomes, but it's feasible that they, you know, you could rezone that something that that site plan was never approved, something different. Because you'd be rezoning to whatever is permitted in the zone, but but the proposed use does not alter the the nature of the edge that already exists between differing uses, but does adjust its location. The proposed reason would actually change the zoning district for the property to a use that is more similar or the same to all zones that the property is surrounding surrounded by. The zoning district for the property is currently community commercial and the property is bordered by the R4 zone on two sides, the north and the south. The R18 zone, which is a single family zone to the west and the and community commercial to the east. The R4 zone is also located further to the east across Washington Boulevard. And this rezone, if approved, would be a change to a more similar zoning as that, which is is on boarding properties. If you look at the bottom left of this report, there's a small maroon box and that's approximately the area that's being applied to be rezoned. Right now, it's listed, we haven't updated our zoning map on this with regards to the community commercial zone. It says C2, but that's the the same zone, just different title. And the back portion of that property where it says C2 is is what's being discussed to potentially be rezoned to R4. And you'll notice on the north and south are currently the R4 zone. Then to the west is the R1. So the the next guideline is that zoning should reflect the existing use of property to the greatest extent possible. Unless the area is in transition or is in conflict with the general plan. Staff comment on that guideline is that with the development of the townhomes just to the east. I'm sorry, that just to the south in recent years, it is safe to say that this area has been in transition. And the next guideline is that where possible, properties which face each other across a local street should be the same or a similar zone. Collector and arterial roads may be sufficient to warrant different zones. Staff comment on that guideline is that the rezone would not affect property which faces a street directly. Additionally, the street by which the property is accessed is is an arterial street. Which which is, of course, Washington Boulevard. So the development itself then connects to, as it stands now, connects to Washington Boulevard. The next guideline is that zoning boundaries should not cut across individual lots or developments. I.e. placing a lot in two separate zones. Geological boundaries should be redrawn to follow property or establish geographical lines. Staff comment on this is that the proposed zone change would not cut across individual lots once the rezone is applies to the final boundaries of the subdivision. Again, the rezone needs to be subject to the final boundaries of the subdivision and the boundaries of the subdivision will be subject to the requirements of the approved site plan. There's three more guidelines that pertain specifically to residential guidelines. The first is avoid isolating neighborhoods. The proposed zone change is zone change is the same use as the townhomes immediately to the south. And if approved, will be an extension of that existing townhome development. The development will not isolate any existing neighborhoods. The next guideline is require excellence in design. Staff comment on this is that the townhomes in the prior phase of this development that would potentially be expanded if granted site plan approval are of high quality in their design. And then the final guideline is consider development agreements to ensure higher quality development. I know development is agreement is proposed or considered to be necessary for this potential townhome development to be extended. The the general plan weighs in regarding this area. It calls for this property to be developed as part of the South Town mixed use area and land use category. There's not a definition of South Town mixed use as a land use category in the in the general plan for for some reason, but there is some detailed commentary on it and other location specific to that to that neighborhood of South Town. It says it says that that the South Town area is intended to provide a support function to the downtown. And one of the goals specified for the area is to promote mixed use housing concepts that add quality developments to the area and provide more rooftops to support business. The R4 zone is viewed by staff to be consistent with these goals for the area in the general. Staff recommendation is that oh, real quick, the the Planning Commission recommended in a 5-0 vote that this property be rezoned to the R4 zone. Subject to the final boundaries of a legally approved subdivision for the parcel. And I think it's fair to say that that was as specified in the ordinance, because the ordinance is is what the same ordinance was presented to them as is being presented to you. And so staff recommends that City Council receive public comment, consider the the general plan rezoning guidelines and make a decision regarding whether this property should be rezoned. In that staff also recommends that the City Council can find that this application is consistent with the general plan. Recommends approval of the rezone from community commercial to multifamily residential R4. So so. Okay, are there any questions that you have?
You just want to be next, or go to Councilmember Exstrom here?
Okay.
I believe in the Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion about a road that was committed to UDOT to tie into 2100, was it?
2001, I can't remember, but yeah.
Is that a part of the the conditions here that would be necessary to approve?
The the best answer that I can give you on that is that's to be determined. That would probably be considered as part of site plan approval. And whether that's a requirement or not, and site plan approval effectively is is a requirement of the rezone. Or well, essentially it is because the parcel's not yet.
I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the fact that there's that. And John, you may you may recall the convention that was made to pass the road. I just want to make sure that that's.
Is that the 325 East that is is that UDOT's wanting connected to 2000 or to 2100?
It it, yeah, it comes up to 2100. And if these these properties are not being developed right now, it's just this one. But essentially, the UDOT has said when this, when one of these other connections is made either south to 2000 or north and up to 2100, this connection goes away. UDOT, this this connection is too close to the line at Kurt's. And so when this connection's made, it will happen, but they and they will not let us make it unfeasible for that connection to to happen. So we have to force the developer to do that.
Okay, sure. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Exstrom, did you have a question?
I did. I just wanted to make sure I was hearing correctly. So is it actually the same owner and same developer that have put in the current townhomes that they're connecting to? Is it going to be just essentially a continuation of the neighborhood? Is that what I understood?
It's the same. Well, I understand it to be the same builder. And I think that there's the property is currently potentially in transition to that builder of the ownership. So.
And my understanding is the front parcel still remain commercial along Washington Boulevard?
Yes, that's correct.
Did I see another comment on this, Wayne? Any questions for Brandon with a motion here? I don't see any, so let's proceed. What we would need, and Susan, do we have an ordinance number here?
Yeah, it's 2022-13.
So it'll be ordinance 2022-13. And this would be approving a rezone from community commercial to multifamily residential R4. Do we have a motion to approve that ordinance?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2022-13. Changing the community commercials to multifamily residential R4 at approximate location of 2067 North Washington Boulevard.
Brandon, were there any conditions that need to include in the motion? Now that's out. Thank you. Do you have a second to Councilmember Exstrom's motion?
Second.
Councilmember Swanson, so we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on this issue? If not, let's go ahead with a roll call vote on this. Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Exstrom?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. So we'll move on now to item number eight. I believe on our agenda. Jamie Jones, Finance Director. Will lead this discussion. And this is an action to consider ordinance approving fiscal year 2022, 23 final. So my final. Jamie, would you want to present information for the council before we enter into a public hearing?
I do. Let's update slide. So considered to consider adopting the final budget or consideration of a new tentative budget in the council to taxation. The council adopted a tentative budget on May 10. And we've held two meetings since then. And so the following items. The following items have either been included or removed based based on those discussions. And I think I think everybody's pretty much familiar. I do have a correction where it says personnel personnel salaries citywide is 330. That should actually be 90. 90,000 and that was after the tentative. So we've increased personnel salaries and the general fund about 90,000. We discussed that 70 of that was for the Public Safety Fund. The 23rd Officer has been removed to be reviewed when South Tax is reaching over 125,000 over projected. Events Coordinator, we talked about, is reduced to part-time contracted at 25,000. Depreciation is included for the 225. And then we've included fuel costs in addition to the first increase, we increased again about 32,000 in the general fund. Capital Projects, we've removed the Longview Park. And then I do have a correction on a line item. In the tentative, it says that the we were going to reserve the park impact fees, but that should be appropriated to fund balance. So I just need to call that out. The correction was for 390, 390,000. And the Enterprise Fund, again, part of the personnel salaries increase was included in that. And then also the fuel fuel costs across all funds was increased about 8,000. To the next slide. So we currently have or still have a $10.1 million expenditure fund in the general fund and we have about 9.6 million projected in revenues. So here's where we talk about property tax. For fiscal year 22, our valuation for the city was 1.5 billion. And we held the rate at the 1180, which gave us approximately 1.8 million. We did receive our property tax for fiscal year 23 and valuation was at 2 billion. Which is about a 33% increase in valuation. And so that drops our property tax rate to the 911. Which means total revenue to the city is about 1.877 million. Do you have a comment?
Let's just see if you saw anything particular about the rate going to 911. That's a message.
Let's not go there.
So overall, our growth in the city of 22 years, about $82,000 and it was projected to be 90. So we're pretty close there. So this is where it gets a little sticky. So if you have questions, please stop me. Within the budget, in the tentative budget, we included a 7% increase to the tax rate plus growth. Which equaled out to be the $222,000. That was already included in the budget. And then as of June 7th, we've had a deficit of 337,000 and that was including all this, all the items in the previous slide that were either added or removed. So really technically, our deficit in the general fund is about 560,000. So to basically sum it up, and I'll let you guys finish the discussion, if we were to hold the rate at the 1180. That would make our tax revenue 2.4 million, which is a 29.53% increase. And it gets us there to just about a balanced budget within $5,000.
Can we ask a question on this deficit? We just did approve some additional borrowing. That bond payment and interest will have to be made in fiscal 23.
Yes, so that
That'll be additional probably 200,000.
Correct. So that is not included in this budget and neither is the
Salary cushion.
So the mid-year, no. So that is not included either, nor is the new contract we just did with Big D. So based on tonight's discussion, we'll determine if we pass the budget tonight or if we're moving forward with trus and taxation and those adjustments can be made before then. Otherwise, we have to come back the 20th.
I just wanted the council to understand that the total deficit based upon what you've presented now is really the 559 plus the additional bond payment. Which will have to be made in fiscal year, even if the building's not complete.
Yes, it would have to be made in fiscal year 23. However, we could drop the transfer to capital projects from 500,000 down to 3.
We could, which means that we change our plan for long term. Which that's whatever the council would decide there. But I just want to make sure they understand what the real situation is we're facing. So you could potentially have another 200,000 for the 559. Plus, we talked about a cushion. We'll maybe call that a Swanson from now on.
Call it a Swanee.
A Swanee?
There you go.
What's happening with Sal is not knowing what's what's going on. Which I think was another 125 out of my
Yes.
recollection. So you're really talking potentially another 375. Just so the council has full Councilmember Swanson.
As I see it, one thing that we know for sure is that we're going to go to a truth into taxation. Right? And we can we can belabor minutia and minute points tonight to death. But we've got until August to figure all that out, right? What we do know is that the county's rate of .000911 isn't going to cut it by any stretch of the imagination. I did some quick math today. That tax rate of .00911 That tax rate of point zero zero nine one one is seventy-eight percent less than the tax rate in nineteen ninety of point zero zero four two two four. So our tax rates have dropped seventy-eight percent since nineteen ninety. The increases that we've seen have come because of, uh, we had one increase where we actually increased the rate, I think it was twenty seventeen. Um, but beyond that, we've held the rate once or twice, and the rate has dropped every year since nineteen ninety to the tune of seventy-eight percent, the tax rate dropping. Um, it hasn't kept up with inflation. We've seen the slides in the past, and I'll have plenty of information for you for, and for the public at the truth and taxation hearing. My recommendation is that we, uh, go to truth and taxation for, uh, up to maintaining the rate. I mean, that, that, that's and, and we can decide, you know, if we decide, we can set that maximum. And if we decide we want to do less between now and then, we can do that. And the actual rate that we choose would be chosen at the truth and taxation hearing. Council member Exstrom? I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you what I'm thinking at the moment.
I think that's great. I mean, for me, if we don't hold the rate with the minimum, what I would do. I mean, to me, it's, it's, it's been kind of ridiculous that it has been so far withheld that I, I think that it, it needs to increase even just a little bit until we are collecting as much in property tax to cover the operational budget of the police department. I mean, that's kind of my, that's my goal, and to just kind of inch, inch our way toward that. So I think even holding the rate is, I don't know, maybe not getting us, it, you know, at some point, we just have to bite the bullet and say, look, we, we have, we've held back too long, and, you know, it's, it's hard to do right now, just because everything's going up, but the cost for the city are also just going up, and if we're going to maintain the level of, you know, quality of life that we want to have here, that's kind of what has to happen, we, you know, there's only so much we can cut, 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 and then we have to say, it's like, okay, now we've got a.
Thank you, council member Exstrom. Um, Jamie, what do you need tonight? Based upon council's, um, and Swanson's comment?
What's that with the name?
I, I, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so, um, we, we do need a revised tentative for our operating budget to get this to August. The decision's go, to go through TNT, um, and then also a rate so that we can get that to the county by the twenty-second.
I believe, uh, if, in meeting with Susan, ultimately what we're going to have to do here, based upon, I guess, state ordinance, is we're going to have to, approve an ordinance that are intentioned to exceed the certified rate. It's council member, uh, Swanson talked about, the approximate dollar amount. That would increase, which I think's been addressed here. And, uh, the fact that we will be holding a truth and taxation hearing. Just as a reminder, part of the problem we're faced with here, I'm sure we don't want to belabor that, but we've been hit with a quarter of a million dollar kind of what I call an accounting correction. And yet, this means we have to take out the words unfunded depreciation. But, you know, this, this is something that had probably been properly accounted for for a number of years, would have resulted in an adjustment to the tax rate, which now is, has to be done as we face
Larger rather than incremental.
Find out that, you know, not all snowplows, uh, last twenty-eight years, and police cars, uh, that's for ten. So, you know, that, that is something that we kind of just, it's the right thing to do, but it's, uh, something that's kind of popped its head up and, uh, requires to be addressed. So you need
A revised tentative in the tax rate.
Okay, uh, the revised tentative, what would you need there? I'm sorry, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
Uh, just that the budget, um, the budget as is with the five hundred and, well, it's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar deficit is our new operating budget until we pass the budget.
Which includes the things you put on the schedule there, if the council agrees with that, or they don't agree with it, now would be the time to make that adjustment, and then what we need to do is increase apparently the revenue side to balance the budget.
Well, so that would come, that would.
But if we have a three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar deficit, we can approve a deficit budget, right?
Right, so it would come out of the general fund charter.
Yeah. Uh, or in anticipation of, of revenues. You know, we still have between now and August to determine what needs to done, be done. I'm a little sick of hearing this, but, uh, I just want to make sure that everyone has done their review of the financial side, the expense side of the ledger as we go into truth and taxation, so that we feel comfortable that we've addressed all those issues, but I think the key here, council, is are you in agreeance with the things that Jamie presented? Elimination of the twenty-third officer? Can we go back to that? John, just want to make sure that that's basically what the council would be approving in this tentative budget. Are those items right there? At this point in time. But, uh, council member Exstrom?
I do have some questions. First, can we, um, maybe make the same deal on the events coordinator as we did with the police officer? So that we can, you know, I, I, I got a pretty, you know, it, it, to me, it was fairly clear that Tiffany really needs that full-time events coordinator, or would really, really like it, it's making her job very, very hard to not have that, that position filled. And so, you know, to, to get that in, I, I think would be reasonable. Would everybody be okay with that?
Let me ask, uh, since council member Barker has that assignment, what his recommendation uh, would be obviously council's decision, but I think it's good to hear from council member Barker regarding his feelings.
Yeah, um, I spoke with Tiffany and, my, the same agreement, she feels she needed, so I think we need to least advertise and see if we can do it.
Okay, so if, if that's what the council, uh.
That's going to change this.
That would change this budget amount to a larger deficit. John, I think has done some research on what it might take.
So I just want to clarify, because I, I think the one, one comment was do the same thing with the police, which was if sales tax comes in high enough, then we advertise, and the other comment is advertise and build the position, so. Then, and.
I prefer that one.
And what I mean is, there's, there's, there's two different things. One is if it's the, when sales tax comes in, then we don't need to do anything to the budget. The other one is, if we're going to fill it now, then Jamie would essentially prepare that for the August truth and taxation budget. Because that, that would be my, that's what I anticipate is what would happen. Is that right, Jamie?
And I, I concur with advertising it now and getting it to the budget. Is that okay, Ryan?
What does that do to additional, additional funds needed, revenues needed?
I think about sixty, well, it's probably going to cost
I think you're right, Mayor.
Thirty bucks base salary. Put benefits on that, you're probably talking about an additional seventy-five thousand dollars.
On top of the twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars probably. Uh, based.
Power and benefits.
John has done. And what it would take to probably get somebody, uh, that would meet, meet the needs.
Okay, and then my other question was, John, what did we find out about the senior center parking lot?
Uh, I have not heard back from the library yet.
Okay, that's a big chunk.
Yeah, but it all, it all would be coming out of capital projects as opposed to the operational.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, about, those are my questions about that, so, okay. Anybody else? I guess that's your job, I don't remember if there's anybody else.
Council, uh, John, did you have a comment?
Uh, Jamie does.
Yeah, I'd like, I was just going to ask Jamie if you had a comment.
Yeah, I've just been thinking about the events coordinator for the last week, it's been something that's, I've been thinking about a lot. And, uh, I do like the idea that, uh, so, I can't remember who proposed it, that it is, uh, related to if revenues come in in a certain way with sales taxes. Um, I'm really worried about where we're at with being against holding the rate right now, but from, from my view, as it stands right now, uh, we're basically at holding the rate with what, everything that's on this slide right here with um, the way that it is, and so I've become more and more uneasy during this week, thinking about the extra expense that would be needed for that events coordinator. It's been kind of eating at me, so, um, I, I would be totally okay with, uh, you know, posting the events coordinator if revenues come in higher than expected by, you know, December or whatever we decide. Uh, but that's just kind of where I'm leaning right now, and, you know, maybe the contracted thing is something that we could consider.
Do council member Dowpas? Um, I would point out, you know, we're talking about revenues coming in above what we're projected. We haven't been real conservative in the sales tax line, I mean, I think we you know, we could be asking ourselves what we're going to do if it comes in less, because I think as council member Swanson has pointed out numerous times, the uncertainty that's out there, and you start seeing uh, cutbacks, I, I know, um, talking to my friends in the grocery business, they're already seeing a softening of of, of sales and major purchases.
And mayor?
Uh, we, you know, we could be asking ourselves the question, what are we going to do if sales tax comes in a well for groceries? I think we've built in about four point two million, which we've been scratching our heads, asking ourselves, how do we get that much, right?
Mayor?
Uh, council member Dowpas?
Thanks, sorry, uh, again, one of my thoughts around this that kept swishing around in my mind this week is this is kind of the, considering where we're at with the budget right now, this is a very natural time to consider the part-time or contracted position, because uh, we're, we have the benefit of not having essentially some full-time person's job on the line, so if, let's just say that sales tax revenues start to come in much less than anticipated in the next six to twelve months, then we might have been in a situation where we hired that full-time person, and we had to make a very difficult decision to go back on that and essentially, uh, lay somebody off. So that's something that's been kind of weighing on me, is that we're, we're kind of in this perfect situation right now, even though I know it would be very difficult for Tiffany, and I, I, I have to, I have to say, I don't know exactly how it's going to work, but I just, I just feel like it's the time to make the decision to say, uh, you know, we're not going to move forward with a full-time, and then if the revenues come in by December or so, we can reevaluate it, but it, we don't have to make that hard decision of, of essentially laying someone off if the economy downturns.
No, I, I would just point out, let's begin this, the larger picture. Based upon what, uh, we just talked about, holding the rate does not balance our budget. So the council will be faced, uh, between now and, and August, uh, going above holding the rate, above the twenty-nine percent, or adjusting expenses. Because we're really talking about a seven hundred thousand plus deficit with everything that's on the table. So, not to prolong this, any other questions before we enter into a, a, a public hearing?
Um, just, I haven't talked to Tiffany about this, but if we are in agreeance that we maybe want to do a part-time or I would suggest we, our council steps up like neighboring cities, and we help plan events. For the View and Harrisville Council, all plans, every one of their events. And I'd suggest that we do the same thing, so that we can help Tiffany out.
Okay.
And then, uh, I think.
I'm looking for help in the popcorn booth.
I heard you were covered.
I think I have my volunteer something.
The other thing I think that we can, we can look at too is that, you know, in the time that everybody's, we just have to cut back on events too. You know, so that we're not trying to plan so many, because, I mean, Tiffany's going to make whatever ones that are planned fantastic, so I think we should not burden her with too many to keep track of and to plan. I'm a terrible event, I'm a person, so. Give me a, a list of things to do, that'll be helpful, but there is a, a certain amount of intellectual capital that has to go into that and, and experience and everything else to plan of, events and to keep track of them and, and everything like that, so I think then we have to kind of look at, you know, maybe scaling back.
There, and you know, I'm, uh, one that, uh, doesn't mind trying things, but I think we need to fully understand, uh, the decision is if it's not working, the council needs to act quickly, uh, which would mean a decision between events and coordinator. But, uh, when we talk about deferring this, I, you know, everybody knows where I stand on it, I, that's enough for me, but, um, timing is kind of everything, right? Um, the planning of events and the, and the timing of those, so I think while we do, uh, both Tiffany can answer one way or the other. Doing that because it, uh, uh, if I understand correctly, events are out some period of, of time, so. Uh, council member Swanson, did you have an additional comment before we go to a public hearing?
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of comments, one, uh, uh, again, we need a a rate tonight, is that correct? A not-to-exceed rate, is that my understanding? So we need basically a not-to-exceed rate, not saying that we would go to that rate. We need to approve the revised tentative budget becoming our operational budget, correct? And, and I would suggest to residents between now and, and, uh, August, with the prospect of do we pay more as residents, because it really affects every one of us, right? I pay more, um, and have a full-time events coordinator? Or do we pay less and have fewer events? Right? And I think we need to hear from residents between now and August. Uh, you know, particularly at the, uh, at the truth and taxation hearing. I think we need to have that, uh, we need to have, we need to, we need to know. Right?
To your point, council member Swanson, tonight, when we, after the public hearing, when we look at passing this ordinance, there're basically three things required by state law according to, uh, attorney. Uh, in addition to the operational budget of which the city will be operating under until the, uh, truth and taxation hearing. My understanding is, please correct me, John, if I'm, I'm wrong here. Uh, we surely need to announce that we intend to exceed the certified rate of the zero zero nine one one. We need to have, uh, an estimated dollar amount. So we know what holding the rate would do, and we know that's not enough to cover the deficit, so we would, at this point in time, if we plan going above holding the rate to balance the budget, that would need to, so be declared, and then the approximate percentage increase. percentage increase. Uh, so to to balance the budget, which, you know, I'm, I'm coming down to the deficit of five fifty-nine. I'm adding another bond payment in there, because it will have to be made this year, twenty twenty-three, whether that building is completed or not. So interest and, uh, principal payment I think have to be made. So I, and then the, uh, the cushion for mid-year, I'm, I'm saying we're talking nearly eight hundred plus thousand. So we those are the things we need. Uh, councilmember Swanson, I think you identified most of those, probably the one of the, uh, significant ones tonight is what's the operational budget that the city will be operating under till the truth and taxation, so. Okay, anything else before we have a public hearing on this matter?
Mayor, I just want to express my thought on this. Um, when I look at that and I see that, um, I, 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 uh, I feel like I feel like because we're not, we're, we're in such uncertain terms right now and don't have any idea what the sales tax is gonna look like in the future, to me, a, a police officer, we're kind of putting the, we're kind of putting on hold a twenty-third police officer. And then just simply saying that if we get the tax revenue, we can make that adjustment. I think that's a significant difference between a, a, uh, events planner. So my thought would be my thought would be that we see how it would work with a contract of twenty-five thousand dollar salary. And that, um, I'll go ahead, please.
Just in my chair.
And then see how that works. And if we need to pick up, I'm more than happy. I'm running the dunk booth, I guess. Mark Noah tells me I'm running the, uh, dunk booth at the cherry day, so I, I would love to see personally myself. We either decide to reduce the amount of events, or as councilman Barker indicated, we just get involved more consistently, so.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Let's open us up to a, a public hearing. Anyone here in the audience, including staff, uh, residents, and those who are online? If they would like to, uh, comment, at this point in time, we're now in a public hearing. Uh, John, so, well, we'll go, uh.
Uh, Susan Clemmons, I am a North Augen resident. Um, it's an interesting discussion of having the council members be event coordinators. Um, and then the other cities do that. So I question how many activities the other cities actually do. We kind of, we've done a lot of activities. I mean, Cherry Days is bigger than Founder's Day, and I'm not sure what Harrisville does. I'm sure they have something. Um, but do they have the the, the run where you throw the paint and everything, the color run? Do they do? The, the bicentennial, well, the, the Christmas, all the Christmas stuff that we do. Um, I can see they could do it and they could have their council members do it. But that, that's a lot to continue with the city. Um, one other thought too is, um, these activities, these things that go, that pull people in from Harrisville and, uh, Pleasantville, and often they're bringing people into the city and they're buying gas, they're buying food, they're doing a lot of things that brings money in, so. The activities are good, these events are good, but they might be too good. Um, but that, those are just things to consider. Um, I have one other um, just suggesting maybe fewer event, events. If we're scaling back, the events coordinator um, have fewer events until, maybe until we get back not really on our feet, but until the economy gets a little more solid than what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Susan. John, did you say we had somebody online or comment?
We have Brenda Ashdown.
Okay, let's hear from Brenda.
Hi, thank you. Um, I, I'm not sure. I'm never quite sure if my questions are at the appropriate time, so if I say something I shouldn't, feel free to cut me off. Um, I know I'm beating a dead horse, but when the amphitheater was, um, put into play as far as rebuilding, it was said that the events coordinator would be a volunteer. There was an arts guild committee formed. I believe they had three meetings that I was aware of, that I listened into, that I have not heard any more of them. Where are they? And wasn't part of their purpose in helping to coordinate or lead the events at the amphitheater specifically. Um, why are we paying benefits for part-time employees? Um, you know, I, I, I don't know what the reasoning is, but I know most businesses do not pay benefits for part-time employees, which is, uh, the reason why they have part-time employ, employees. Um, and I feel like by, um, the comments that are made here that having a full-time events coordinator is more important than hiring another officer. And that is something that concerns me immensely for the safety of our city. Um, and the last comment would be that I hope that you will do some good excessive advertising for the taxation meeting that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. We can answer some of those questions at the end of our meeting, so that the council has time to digest some of those questions. Uh, John, is there anyone else?
Yes, I have, uh, Stephanie Casey as well.
And if you just state your name, if you're a resident, and then five minutes, please.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Am I? Okay, sorry, I've been I've been out with COVID for two weeks and I'm trying to catch up on work. This has been a rough time. Anyway, so I'm in my car heading home, sorry. Um, I have some thoughts, I, some concerns as I listen to this discussion about an events coordinator and the need. Uh, there's comments about volunteerism and, excuse me, the struggle to get them, the importance of, you know, the, the knowledge that we bring, which I'm not disputing any of that. But we seem to forget that last year, we had a huge, successful Cherry Days done completely by residents volunteering that was planned and done in two months. I, I mean, it's just, like, we just kind of pretend that didn't happen in these discussions, which is really weird to me. Um, we have a city that is full of volunteers. They are volunteering for so many things, but I don't see advertisements or requests for volunteers to help with city events. Once in a while, I'll see something about Cherry Days, but last year was all over. I knew exactly what they needed volunteers for. I knew exactly what jobs they were looking for volunteers for. I see none of that for any events. Um, we did have a committee. Why don't we have more committees? I mean, committees made up of residents, community members, working on events that are for our community. It, it makes so much sense, I just don't understand. It feels like we have a really big control problem, and that bothers me, because if these events are for our community, we should be doing everything we can to involve them in the process. And it doesn't feel like we try to involve them in the process as much as we could. Um, and I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thanks.
John, do we have anything else?
Not online.
We have anyone alter in the audience that would like to comment? Now would be your time. Okay, I don't see anyone else that would like to make a comment.
We need to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to, uh, closing the hearing by councilmember Swanson. We have a second to that motion. Okay, we have a second to that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right. So, uh, the next item on the agenda after the public hearing, if anybody has any comments, would be, uh, to address ordinance, I believe, Susan, twenty twenty-two dash fourteen uh, in regards to, uh, the budget. Um, Jamie or John, if you would just regurgitate what this motion needs to include, so and what action may, needs to be taken, uh, here, I think that would be helpful.
So this, this ordinance does include, um, the idea of a, a tax rate. The, I included, uh, just barely the, the requirement for the money, the estimated money as well. It, the truth and taxation ordinance is, or state code is terrible. It says it in one spot and not in another, and so I think for safety reasons, we should include the estimated amount as well. And then, uh, this obviously includes the idea that we would hold the truth and taxation. So those are the three things that are required. We hold a hearing, what the maximum rate would be. Uh, they will not, at the hearing, let you go higher than the number you picked tonight. Um, and then they ask for an estimated dollar amount, because that will go out in the notices to folks. What the B rate is, how much additional taxes that will generate. Um, and then it, it actually includes some stuff about what the average house would pay and things like that when the actual notice goes out.
It can be lower than what the council says tonight, but it can't be higher.
Correct.
So, just for my, uh, sake, if we said we're holding the rate, we would still have some expenses uh, that we'd have to adjust, because it doesn't balance the budget. So once again, don't want to beat the bed horse, but you know, my stance, expenses first, revenues second. But if the council does not feel like there's room to cut those expenses, then you might want to make sure you leave yourself the revenue side. Because, as John said, you limit, you limit yourself uh, there, and hold, and holding the rate, if I understand this right, would not balance the budget. Is that correct? By the time you add in the bond payment? Some of the effects.
We don't know what our bond payment will be yet. We don't know the actual rate of bond payment's gonna be. We were given an estimate that the phone amount, and we went less.
Yeah, so you're gonna just take whatever two point seven million is, divided by three point seven million, and have a pretty close estimate of what your bond payment would be. Uh, councilmember Swanson, do you have that number?
Uh, I don't have that number, but I, I do have a different number.
Okay, let's hear what your number is.
Um, if we hold the rate, our, John, can you go back to that slide that had the, that one right there? You can see there that if we hold the rate, tax revenues would be, and I don't have, I didn't have that up, so I can't do the, somebody will do the quick math. Um, we would have revenues of two million, four hundred thirty-two thousand, one fifty-one, give or take ten or fifteen cents. Cents, yeah. Um, if we set a maximum, and again, I mean, the pitchforks will fly and the darts are coming in, and I'm sure there's somebody out there with a long-range rifle. I, I feel a red dot right about here. If we went back to the twenty seventeen rate uh, of point zero zero one two eight nine. So that would be a raise in the rate. Now, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but covering the bases, right, given options. Um, that would give us revenues of two million, six fifty-six, eight fifteen, which would be a, an increase of Jamie, do some quick math for me, would you?
About two hundred thirty thousand.
Oh, I know that. I'm talking about the percentage increase over the, um, the, the two thousand sixty-one, one forty-three. What would be the total percentage? What would that represent? Two, two million four equals twenty-nine point five three. The two million six and change would equal?
Uh, councilmember Swanson, can I just clarify something?
Yes.
The percentage increase is based upon the one million, seven ninety-five, nine seventy, isn't it?
Uh, yes.
So if we went to two point six million?
Right.
Be about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Which is about, uh, forty-five percent, just in my little mind.
That's what I'm wanting to know. Is that correct? What is it?
I was gonna say forty.
So let's, can we do some quick math real quick?
Uh, I've caught, by the way, uh, calculated the bond payment to be about a hundred and ninety thousand, based upon what we know today. So probably oughta uh, put in there, uh, two hundred thousand for the bond payment additional. So we go to two million six, what'd you say, councilmember Swanson? Two million six.
I'm doing the math right here. By one, seven, nine, five, seventy.
I think I'm up at about forty-seven percent.
Forty-seven point nine, so forty-eight percent.
Which gives us how much that two?
Gives us two million, six fifty-six.
Which still doesn't balance it.
Still doesn't balance the budget, and that would be pushing a fifty percent tax increase.
If you round up, which is, uh, you know, the count's ways if it's over five.
You know, mayor, doesn't, I think this is, um, it's important, maybe to remind the public, we're the, the police budget, for example, is three point nine million, right?
No, it's four point something.
No, last I heard, it was three point nine, so it's around four million. The additional bond pay, right? With the bond payment, so I mean, that just, it really puts it into perspective how the an increment like this does make a significant difference. But we're not even, we're, we're still a million and a half dollars short just in covering the police budget.
Property taxes completely.
Property taxes, right, right. So quite honestly, when we look at the property tax, uh, when we look at this, that's the reason why we have to have sales tax revenue be higher. So we're, we're really taking just one department, which we would all agree is probably the most important department of the city, and by property taxes, we're still a million and a half dollars uh, uh, in the deficit, in the back, to not even be able to make that payment.
I think John indicated to the truth and taxation hearing would have to have a potential dollar effect on an average.
We don't have to come up with that tonight.
No, but we will.
Yes.
So just thinking, you know, my famous two hundred fifty dollar number. Rounding to fifty percent, that'd go to three hundred seventy-five dollars. City taxes, a hundred twenty-five dollars. That's like twelve, about ten bucks a month, ten or eleven bucks a month. Um, just, I'd just like the council to understand the the overall, uh, picture of what the, the proposed events.
Mayor, would you, will you say that one more time? Not only for my clarity, but maybe just those who are watching would understand that monthly adjustment.
I will try.
Okay.
Council Swanson, uh, councilmember Swanson, correct me here. Just using an average property tax that goes to the city entire bill, which is about ten percent, as I recall. So the average citizen right now is paying about two hundred and fifty dollars in property tax to the city. And on, once again, almost hate these numbers, because it always comes back to haunt me, like, I'm proposing this, I'm just giving information, so if I can clarify, I'm not proposing. I'm just giving information. So if you had a, uh, you know, you talked about forty-seven point nine percent, just for calculation purposes. If that was fifty percent, that means it'd go to three hundred seventy-five dollars, right? An increase of one hundred twenty-five dollars per year. Dividing that by, uh, twelve months in a year, it'd be, you know, about ten dollars, fifty cents a month. Increase in the average citizen's property tax. So that's average, some would be less, some would be higher, as evidence. some would be higher, as evidenced by Councilmember Swanson's presentation last council meeting. You know, as I look at this, you, you can see there's some work still to be done, right, between now and August. As evidenced, you know, we're not building a Taj Mahal. We're not putting together a Taj Mahal budget for operations. But it involves some tough decisions the council has to deal with, between now and truth and taxation, including examining every expense. Again, like you haven't done it before, but again, because it's probably gonna be a combination here of things. So with that, uh, I would be looking for a motion that would include, uh, potential, I think it's clear, the council has said, uh, we will need a truth and taxation hearing, so that's a given at this point in time. Uh, the anticipated dollar increase and the approximate percentage increase that would be discussed as part of the truth and taxation, and once again, not that that will be the number. That's to be decided between now and then. Does that cover Susan?
Yeah, and we need to say we're amending the tentative budget, since this isn't our final one.
And we're going to amend it to include those things that were just discussed. And to amend that, uh, we need how much, five hundred, uh, with what you presented, it needs amendment to either reduce the amount going into capital projects?
Right.
Or, uh, revenue estimate, to balance that budget. So maybe we should start there. Council, uh, anything else? If we could go back to that slide. Uh, we're at five fifty-nine now with the things included, so you have two options to balance that budget, uh, you have many, but tonight, you probably have two. One is, are you going to reduce the amount transferred into capital projects, which currently stands at how much, four hundred? Is that including balancing the original seventy-three thousand, isn't that how we know? So five hundred? You can wipe that out. You wipe some of that out. Or you can say, uh, we need at least this much in revenues, to balance that operating budget, so the, uh, department heads will know how to operate their departments. Okay, how would you like to balance that five hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixteen cents?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Dowd, that's good.
Sorry if that startled everyone there.
Well, it's good, wake, wake them up.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, could you please explain in further detail the five hundred thousand dollars being reduced in the capital project or transferred? I just, I feel like I need to better understand that.
You know, when we started the budget process, it started by saying, here's the revenues will be allocated out to each department, then came back inflation on salaries, then came the surprise of the unfunded depreciation, which kind of tossed that out, but as part of that budget, the, the council, uh, proposed a way, uh, to go to budgeting, and that was the council's proposal. In that proposal was a long-term portion that said, hey, we need to budget revenues over expenditures, so we don't find ourselves in the position we are today. So that we would have an excess of five hundred thousand dollars to deal with our situation with needed parks in the future, uh, with maintenance of existing buildings. And then we knew there were opportunities that would come along, we didn't want to have to pass on. So that five hundred thousand dollars was the amount budgeted of revenues over expenditures. Then what happens to balance that budget generally, you can leave it in the general fund, up to thirty-five percent of your revenues. Or, um, you can transfer it into capital projects. The council made the decision to plan for the future and look long-term, instead of going like from year to year, but that's what they would do. So that's the five hundred thousand, so in wiping that out, that would mean you're on a year-to-year, maybe even day-to-day situation, so. But you can surely balance the budget, uh, by doing that and then readdressing it between now and August. Does, does that make sense? Councilmember Dowd.
Yes, it does. So summarized, that five hundred thousand dollars is planning for the future, um, as opposed to just kind of day-to-day that we would have otherwise been doing.
That would be, that would be a summary, that allows for, uh, as the citizens go up south, for, uh, parks. Makes it so we, we don't have twenty-eight-year-old equipment in our parks, uh, so that you can implement a, a reasonable rotation schedule. Because, you know, you can, you can balance a budget, and you can hold property taxes by just kicking everything down the road, right? I liken this unto what's happening at Lake Powell. The water level now has got so low that all the bodies are floating to the surface, right? So, you know, not throw blame anywhere, but the fact of the matter is, is all these things are coming to the surface that need to be addressed. And we can surely kick them down the road and lay them in someone else's lap, that's your decision, or we can plan for the future. Because we know the city is, is growing and will continue to grow. And, uh, I believe it's the council's obligation to properly plan, to maintain our quality of life long-term. This is my little mind's thoughts. Councilmember Swanson?
Mayor, as you, as you were explaining that, and uh, as I continued to mow over, you know, possibilities and things like that, I've been thinking back the last couple of years, you know, where we've seen, I've been racking my brain trying to find the extravagance in, in our budget in the last really four, five years. And, and as I look at it, it's like, we haven't been purchasing unnecessary equipment. We, we haven't built anything that was, you know, millions of dollars and, and extravagantly uh, unnecessary. Uh, we haven't even put in pickleball courts. Right? And I think, okay, so where, where has the cost increase come? Primarily. Right? You mentioned two things earlier that you're pretty hot on. One is staying out of debt to the...
So that'd be three.
That would be three. What were the other two? One of them was employees.
Yeah, which...
And what was the other one?
Public safety.
The public safety. If you look at the, and I don't have a number, and, and I will have a number for August. But if you look at where the increase in cost has come as a city, it's our officers and our employees that I, thanks to you, you brought a great, um, mindset to our city, that we invest in our employees and keep good people, so that we provide top-notch services to our residents. And I think that's where, uh, I, again, I don't have all the dollar figures, but if, I, I know that in twenty seventeen, just our starting police pay was seventeen dollars an hour. Ted Heinz, what's our starting pay now? Twenty-six and change, or close to twenty-five and change? I, I mean, you, you take that number there, that alone is darn near a fifty percent increase. Just in what our officers are making, and we didn't do that just to spend money, we did it to keep good officers. Because we didn't want to be a revolving door, we saw the value in public safety. And the same can be said for public works, for parks, for admin. That's where most of the dollars that we have seen in an increase in our city have gone. It's into our employees, uh, to make sure that we're able to keep good people and, um, it, uh, anyway, I could wax philosophic, but that was just a thought that popped into my head. Where, where have we invested this money, and it's in our employees primarily?
Uh, that is a, surely a big portion of it, uh. The employee market is, has changed dramatically.
Upside down.
Ten years ago, I was asked by, uh, Mayor Hera, Mayor Harris, to chair a compensation committee.
Remember that.
Uh, at that point in time, we were paying our officers at a twenty-fifth percentile, I'm wondering why we had a revolving door. And I don't think you were on the council back then, this is twenty-ten.
But I was at that meeting.
But the council made the decision, they weren't going to do anything, right?
Right.
And so we lived along for a number of years. And so, you unfortunately could get away with that in the employment market, because it was so soft. The employee market now, and Brenda asked the question, legit, the question, why do part-time people get benefits? That didn't used to be the norm. I can tell you, that's the norm in the marketplace today. Everybody know, but if you want to attract good part-time employees, there are options out there that they probably never had before. I think the other thing, uh, that is a, a major portion, I think also, we've been trying to position ourselves for growth in the city. Instead of being behind, is, is getting people in place that can look at more efficient and effective ways. So we're not just hiring an employee, employee, employee based upon population, but we're, we're looking at the best way. As I put it, I think we've tried to get the right people on the right seat in the right bus, right? That's not cheap to do, but I would add some other things in there. Um, you know, and some people can throw things at me, but, uh, the deferral of a lot of things now have come back, right? The, what, that we're dealing with. I'm a, address first the needs guy, and then the wants. Now, is that to say the city didn't do anything with wants versus needs? Probably not, but things have changed dramatically in just the last couple of years, and I would say, Councilmember Swanson, when you asked about saving money, I think this year probably, fortunately, about a million bucks in property taxes come in, nine hundred and fifty for the building, that we don't have to pawn for. You know, the ARPA money at two, was it two point four, around there? Uh, Jamie, that, that came in, that contributed to it, so thank heavens, we've done some planning for the future, knowing this public safety building is coming. There will be other things that I think we need to think about. Yes, employee compensation, John would tell you, has been substantial to get to, to market, and it will continue to be an issue. Okay.
So what rate do y'all want? It's one of the things we have to identify tonight.
Well, Councilmember Swanson, uh, I'm gonna...
Don't pin it on me.
I am going to pin it on you. This is just, this is just to...
Can I borrow a vest?
To get ourselves to the, uh, truth and taxation hearing.
Exactly.
I am going to pin this on you, because you are a finance liaison, so I think you're best suited, uh, for the council.
Rules. Oh, parks. I'm gonna mow the lawn.
Well, there's, no, not many of these.
They took my lawnmower this week.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Swanson, but let's move this meeting.
Counsel, I am going to suggest with, and seeking for your input and approval, that we set the not-to-exceed rate of zero zero one two eight nine, which is the twenty-seventh inch rate. Understanding that we would, we don't have to go all the way to that rate, we don't have to go anywhere near it. But that would be the, that's the one that gives us two million six, Councilwoman Exton. Which means there would still be, in order to balance the budget, work to do.
The amount would be a forty-seven point nine to seven increase, is that correct, Councilmember Swanson?
Approximately, yes, forty-seven point nine.
I think that needs to be in the, the motion according to the state law.
Yeah, I believe it would be a forty-seven point nine and change.
And how would you propose to, uh, balance this budget?
I would, I would propose that we...
Revenues? Or a combination?
Say that again, I heard revenues and...
Well, there's three ways to balance this budget, right? There's to make adjustments on expenses, then try to figure out how to do that. There's reducing the amount that goes into the capital projects, or you can increase the estimate in revenues, which in essence, you somewhat done by the dollar amount and the percent that you disclosed.
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard a way yet that gets us all the way to the five fifty-nine. Correct? If we, uh, uh, and I, you know, it's, as much, we've done so much saving, and we've done a really good job for years, and sometimes you just can't save as much as you'd like to. I think we've all been through that in our personal budgets. Um, where you have a plan, and then, you know, you have expenses and things that come up that were unplanned, and you can't save like you'd wanted to. I, I think we first, uh, we eliminate that transfer to capital projects this year. Uh, and, and then we have to look for another sixty thousand.
Well, once again, I'm, yeah, on, on this budget, though, when it comes to truth and taxation, you've got those other items that aren't in here.
Yep.
So...
And we've got till August to figure that out.
Okay, so could I, I say then, your proposal is to eliminate the transfer into capital projects and increase the estimated, uh, property tax by the remainder?
Yes.
Well, work for you, Jamie.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion would be stated, do we need two separate motions here to, uh, amend the budget, John, or can we do this all together?
You can do it all together, and then I, I put the numbers that Councilman Swanson said here in red.
Okay.
I'll blow it up so you can see it a little bit better. Make sure I share it.
Okay. Then I think the other portion would be to eliminate any building of the capital projects fund and, uh, increasing the uh, property tax revenue by the approximately sixty thousand dollars. Does that cover everything we need? Okay, uh, thanks for that motion, Councilmember Swanson. Uh, do we have a?
You're welcome.
Do we have a second?
I have a counter motion to increase the rate to point zero zero one three, just rounded up. Give us a little bit more cushion there as our maximum.
I'm sticking to my one, two, eight, nine. If you want a substitute motion, we can vote on it.
Okay, just, we have a second to Councilmember Swanson's motion. I second it. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Now discuss, discuss.
Councilmember, uh, Dowd, so we don't want to eliminate you.
I'd like to know each council member's thoughts, please.
About, well, we will have a roll call vote.
I want more than just a yes or a no, I want to know thoughts. I've expressed my...
Okay.
I'm, I'm ready to give you my thoughts.
Okay, Councilmember Dowd, pass. Go ahead, please.
So we find ourselves in a very difficult situation. We're all feeling the weight of what's happening right now. I think it's a, it's a given that we're feeling a lot of responsibility right now, because this is, uh, the members of the community's hard-earned money, and, uh, it's, it's not something that I'm taking lightly. So that's first being said, I, I just want to say that if, if you think about it, if you look at where our deficit was, um, everyone agrees, and a lot of the citizens, if not almost all of the citizens that I talk to, agree that public safety is a big, uh, a big priority for them, okay? So, just, just to kind of play it out, so, so the, the community could understand a little bit why we find ourselves in this situation, is if we were to, if we were to say, okay, the public safety building is no longer happening, which I, I'm not proposing at all. I'm just saying, to, for illustration purposes, that that public safety building, the full bond amount, will be approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget each year, okay? So our deficit that we find ourselves in, that I think was flashed on the cre, on the screen previously, was somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars, uh, and change. So, that is the, that's the biggest illustration that I can make, uh, as to where we find ourselves. It's, it's a necessity, um, it's a necessity that... It's, it's a necessity. It's a necessity that has been kicked down the road for probably longer than we should have. And, and so, you know, it, this, this percentage increase is going to get headlines, of course. And it's, I, I hope actually that we will get a lot of residents to come in and comment, but I hope that they will, you know, call myself, call other council members, set up meetings with us, send us emails, try to understand everything about the budget that they can because I feel like over the last few months, it just, it's my opinion that I believe that we've been open and transparent about, about everything that's happening with the numbers. So I would just say, you know, my thought is I, I support this increase just because I think it's an absolute necessity. I mean, we, we're talking about public safety being a lion's share of these increases and also the, the salary increases that we need to give our employees at the city. If we don't give those salary increases, then we're just going to find ourselves behind. So I'm rambling a little bit, but what I'm saying is I am supportive of this increase. And this is only an increase that is the worst-case scenario. I'm committed to working with the other city council members, the mayor, Jamie in finance, and any of the department heads to see if there's something that we haven't considered yet because I'm starting to feel the weight of this and I feel like we might be able to find additional places to be creative. But is that good enough, Mayor?
Your comments are always good enough. I would just add one thing here. In the original budget, with the seven percent tax increase, which we tied to kind of what the social security question was, let me just remind your council that that would require no increase for the public safety building. The bond payment of four-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars was built into that and still had the option for the five-hundred thousand dollar savings. So I just want to clarify that I, I don't believe the increase is being forced by the public safety building. Surely if you did do it, you could cut it, but that's, that would be short-sighted, I think, for the long-term build out of the city. So I just want to clarify that. That, that was built into the original budget with an excess of five-hundred. But we had adequate revenues at the time to pay the initial four-hundred-and-ten thousand dollar bond payment.
And I, I think that the point I was trying to, and I think you're right. I think the point that I was just trying to illustrate that even, we all know that the public safety building is a top priority and we're moving forward with it. We know that. But I'm just saying for illustration purposes, if we were to cut out a brand-new public safety building and everything that goes around it, 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 unless if I'm wrong, because I, I would love for someone to chime in if I'm wrong, it, it essentially take care of this entire deficit that we're dealing with right now. So that's just the way that I'm thinking through this.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Let's go to Councilmember Barker. Well, do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion, Councilmember Barker?
I, I can't, I can't accept that kind of a rate increase. I wouldn't go any higher than maintaining a rate. We have to cut expenses somewhere or maybe-
Have many dollars.
Maybe this is not the year that we start our, our savings plan. But I, a forty-nine percent, or wait, forty-seven percent?
What is it?
Forty-seven point nine percent increase is too much.
Thank you. Councilmember Swanson, did you have anything else to add? Let's go then to Councilmember Severin, be next to mine.
Been studying a lot about the Constitution this last maybe year. It seems to me that the preamble in the Constitution, it reminds us that we're to look out for the common defense and promote general welfare. And when I first became a city councilman, quasi-government officials reminded me that I was to look out after the safety benefit and welfare of the, of the citizens. So while it does appear, while it does appear to be a large increase, just recognizing this is just an increase on just ten percent of the property tax that you pay at ten to fifteen, twenty dollars per month. I, I really think that actually in the long run is an incredible benefit and provides the protection of the constitutional expectations of government leaders.
Your comments? Councilmember Exum, do you have anything to add?
Sure. We, a lot of times focus on percentages. We don't take percentages to the bank. We take dollars. And I look at the amount of dollars, even, you know, my house is larger, more expensive than average. And I look at the little bit amount that I pay to North Ogden City and what I expect in return for that. And I'm willing to definitely pay at least fifty percent more myself. And even though that does tighten my budget on other things, contributing to the overall welfare benefit of my community is really important to me. And I think that's what we were elected to do. We are elected to create community. And the first thing is safety. And the next is, you know, for me, public works, I mean, our infrastructure, that comes next, but then we can't ignore kind of the, the soft parts of, you know, then also the, you know, the events and things that, that tie us together and connect us. So, you know, all of these things cost money, but if we were to try to do any of them individually, we couldn't do it. But if we can all put in just a little bit, we can do a lot. And so I, you know, I'm looking at, you know, the average amount that we're going to increase, maybe another ten dollars a month. And again, speaking for myself, it's going to be more for me. It's, it's worth it to me and we need to balance, we need to balance the budget. And I think we have really tried and put things, you know, eliminate things that we, we can eliminate. But at some level, that's just how much stuff costs now. It sucks. But, you know, we, we, we have to pay for it. You know, I would, I would love to not, you know, put that money aside, maybe again in, you know, you know, when expenses increase, we don't get to save as much. So yeah, that five-hundred thousand dollars that was going to capital projects, but that's again kicking it down the road. I mean, I would love to not have to have that three-hundred thousand dollars to put into our apartment office, I think, right? So please find out from the library about that. And in which case then I would be a little more, but, but the other things that we're transferring in are for, you know, to, to save for the future. And if we're not putting it in, we're kicking it down the road. So you know, I, I, I think, you know, going back to the twenty-seventeen rate is I, you know, nobody likes it. Nobody likes that after anymore. But, you know, there's a, a certain element of necessity to run the, run the city. So anyway, that's my long rambling.
Okay. May I thank you, Councilmember Exum? I think we've heard from all the council members. Councilmember Swanson, is there anything else you'd like before we take a vote?
No, just a reminder that this would be the maxims. We don't have to hit this amount. And, you know, it's as Councilmember Dowpass mentioned, you know, it's between now and August. We're going to be combing through the budget and we'll define two points to to again ensure that we are where we believe we are, that we have, that we have trimmed every expense that we possibly can to the extent possible. And, and our only option at this time is to increase revenues and, you know, commitment from me, commitment from, I know Jamie and John working with me and and each liaison with their departments going back through budgets and and triple, quadruple, quintuple checking to make sure that we have taken every that we have removed every ounce of fat that we possibly can.
That would be my challenge. I think the, the process, you know, we're in a new process. It's, it's maturing, but I would now each council member to work closely with the department heads. Mayor. And we can look to the citizens in the audience, say they have done everything they can on the expense side. And I think the discussion does go to revenues. All right, I'm going to take a roll call vote on JB.
I just, I don't want, I don't want this to feel like Ryan's being picked on, but I, and I just feel like he's getting off easy with what he said, you know, because I, I don't feel like there's a lot. I will go and I will study and I will try to figure out where we might be able to shave expenses, et cetera. But I just, I, I, I would like to hear what he has to say because I came into this meeting thinking that we were going to maintain the rate and that maintaining the rate simply would have been around, you know, that average of twenty-nine percent increase for the average citizen. And so I just, I, I would like to hear a little bit more from him on his thoughts because that's what I want to say. That's what I would love to say is what we're going to do. But it just doesn't seem like the reality. So I just, I, I would be curious.
I'll leave that up to Councilmember Barker if he has anything further to say. We'll proceed with the motion. If you'd like to say something, Ryan.
I think we have to August.
Yeah.
Have that conversation.
And, and then, not that I disagree, but if you don't, just because you don't have a consensus vote, it's not a bad thing.
No, I think, no, not at all. It's always good for people to re-express their concerns and so we'll go ahead and I'll ask for a roll call vote on this ordinance, which is twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen. I can start with Councilmember Dowpass.
Did, did, did any of us make a motion?
That's what I was wondering. I don't know the-
That ordinance number?
You made the motion, remember I put you down.
Well, I gave numbers, but I don't remember actually motioning the, the ordinance number itself.
I thought we did, because I thought you said, and if it wasn't-
I did, okay. You can tell how this is heavy, how heavy this is on my brain. It's completely melted me.
It was a long discussion.
It's just the weight of it. This is the hardest.
One way, one goes the other.
What were you saying, Frank?
All right, let's start with Councilmember Dowpass.
Yes.
Let's go to Councilmember Exum.
Yes.
Councilmember Severin.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
No.
And Councilmember Swanson.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes on a vote of four to one. Yes, votes, Councilmember Swanson, Severin, Exum and Dowpass, no vote to Councilmember Barker. Since we have to record that now, right? Okay, I would now entertain a motion to recess the city council meeting and, but I do have one other question for Jamie, and I know she was off work for a while. But we talked about, we talked about enterprise funds, particularly storm sewer. Maybe we could probably address that between now and August too, because I know you may not have had time to do the analysis, which is fine.
So we have consolidated these schedules, scheduled, scheduled to come back on July twelfth. And then for the storm water reduction, it would be about a dollar eighty, which would still leave about a sixty cent increase if we decide to increase the solid waste a dollar.
So we'll address that in, in July, but just as a piece of information for the council to consider between now and August. You know, we talk about this just being the North Ogden taxes. I think we all understand that just about every entity on that tax bill will be increasing their taxes. And so this will be much more than a fifteen-dollar average to the citizens. And not that we can control it, but it, it will be, you know, substantially more, I'm showing everybody's tax bill. I think you suggested maybe a five-minute, right?
Mayor, I'd move the recess city council meeting for ten minutes.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a little question.
Six hundred and seventy thousand. Excuse me, we've increased revenue six hundred and seventy thousand, but increased expenditures one hundred and forty two of the general fund. Making the transfer to capital projects, the ten million one seventy, excuse me, the ten million twenty nine. Gosh, I'm all over the place. Sorry about that. So what this means is that we originally had four hundred and eighty six thousand to be transferred to capital projects. But we've increased that to a million fourteen. Most of that is due to self-tax. We increased the self-tax. So for the enterprise funds. Because we've done, we've done the adjustments in the general fund, it does affect the enterprise funds. And most of them are the admin transfer. And what that means is. Because we wear so many hats in the city and for instance, like I'm in finance, but I do work in the water fund and the sewer fund. Part of finance expenses, including salaries are applied to those enterprise funds. So those were adjusted as well. Are there any other questions?
So Jenny, could you just expand a little bit on. Why the salary increases and amending this year's budget? Maybe a little bit more color on the hundred and forty one thousand dollar. Increase in expenditures exclusive of. Of the, the bond event. Is the administrative allocation, does that have anything to do with revenues? Is that why that went up?
The administrative, no, so the admin, the admin offset transfer, is that what you're talking about?
And why, why, is that because of the salary?
That's because of the increases to the expenditure side in the general fund.
And could you just maybe expand or John, one of the two on. What the. Hundred and forty one thousand dollars primarily finance.
So.
What happened over above what we?
So there have been a lot of changes in finance and the finance department and the administrative department. To where we were able to reduce. What was needed in finance in the original budget and transfer that over to the administrative budget. There was also some fees in there for credit card fees. That was budgeted to the tune of like a hundred thousand dollars that was no longer needed because we were not the way that the software came out. It was my job. So we reduced those expenses as well. Non-departamental. Most of those increases were to. The increase to insurance. And that's our liability insurance. And then we've also done some other software. I want to say needs. I don't know if that's. Other additional software needs throughout the year.
With, with the citywide security software, things like that.
The public safety department, we did do. Some incentive pays. And bonuses there.
So the retention?
The retention, yes, thank you. And then in planning, I know that we did, we did adjustments there and then. I, I think that is just all salary, sorry. Streets and highways. Where are you going to pull your budget?
I was, I mean, I was just gonna.
Okay. Streets and highways, I believe, you want to pull that one up? I don't know if that one is all salaries, to be honest.
It's coming all in as the admin fee offset.
Okay, so that's the adjustment because we, we reduced. We reduced some items and. So it's, it's the opposite, right? So we reduced some items which increases. The expenses to the general fund.
So this is an additional allocation from the general fund.
So, okay, so for, so, so the admin, the admin is a negative number, right? And so if you look, then the number used to be two hundred and eighteen. And now it dropped to a hundred and seventy six, but because it's a negative number, it's an increase to the general fund. And then the public works inspections, kind of that same thing. It's an increase to salaries and I believe some of that was additional staff as we were transitioning for retirement purposes.
For the new city engineer. So we had him overlap. So that, so Lauren could train Eric a little bit.
And then, so again, I believe the admin transfer. Increases, if you scroll down a little more. Yeah, thank. Decreases, but it increases expenses by seven thousand.
So that becomes a credit, credit. Counsel, do you have any other questions? Proposed budget amendments? Not, I would open a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Regarding these amendments to our current budget. Anyone like to speak to those online or here in person? Okay, I'm seeing. Look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Brexham is seconded by Councilmember Swanson in further discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Looks like we have a unanimous vote there. So at this point in time, is this ordinance twenty twenty two fifteen, Susan?
Resolution.
She has listed as an ordinance. I believe it's right.
Oh, sorry, I may have one.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd be looking for a. A motion. To approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash fifteen. Which is to approve the proposed budget amendments presented by Jenny for fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the.
It's back up and going, maybe. But they are open to allowing. Residents to, or trading. Fees for services. And other things, although the. They've proposed. For a monthly rent is four hundred dollars at this point. That's, that's neither here nor there in the sense that. What, what we negotiate is the final price. Is what the council will decide in the future. Tonight, you're basically holding a public hearing to decide. If that's a necessary property or if it's something we could lease. To, to this group. Dave is here and he can answer any questions about the utilities in that area. And the impact they might have on the ability to locate a building. He doesn't have an exact map, but he could probably talk through, they're talking about putting a sixteen by thirty two building on this property.
So John, isn't the action tonight to declare surplus property? I think the. Council, at the appropriate time when the lease is presented. They've indicated an interest in leasing that versus selling.
Right.
So the action we need tonight is whether the council would like to declare that a surplus property, is that correct?
That is correct. And now that we're back up and rolling, this is a little property. It's. It's right in between the cemetery. And four fifty east. It's this little path. There's a sidewalk that connects four fifty to four hundred, near the end of Washington.
So you're saying there's really no other significant use the city could do with that property?
No. Based on the utilities there, you would not be able to construct a, a large or a home where we couldn't repurpose it for anything much else.
Okay. All right, anything else before entering to the public hearing, counsel? You'd like to hear from John? If not, then I would open a public hearing regarding this matter of declaring surplus property. Located at twenty nine oh four north, four fifty east. Public hearing is now open. Any comments? Those in attendance or those online?
Let me check for those online. Nope.
Okay, then I would be.
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanson. Do you have a second? Okay. Motion in the second, close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any polls? Motion passes unanimously. Now look at an action to consider a resolution declaring surplus property located at twenty nine oh four north. Four fifty east, if the council so desires to declare that surplus property. We'd be talking about resolution oh seven dash twenty twenty two. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we pass resolution oh seven dash twenty twenty two declaring surplus property located approximately twenty nine oh four north or fifty east.
My second. Have a motion by Councilmember Exum, a second by Councilmember Sev. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go with a roll call vote. Councilmember Severin? Yes. Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alpass?
Yes.
Councilmember Exum?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now proceed to our council department reports. We could get some meaningful succinct reports there. We'll start with Councilmember Severin.
I own police. I only have one item tonight and that is. From the police department, that is, that a very successful golf tournament last Friday. And earned money toward the sub percent program.
That's good, that's a good cause. I understand they're still auditing Councilmember Barker's scorecard.
I didn't even.
It can't get any worse.
All right, I believe also they hired a new officer, so they're fully staffed now, is that correct? Kind of eyes?
Conditional's been offered, yes, sir.
Okay, so. You have that option out there? We'll, we'll let you and Clark get that wrapped up. Okay, Councilmember Exum. Yeah, I think you'd like to report on public works.
Yes, they're always busy in public works. So they installed a new PRV, which is a pressure release valve. I've always happened to. Have my app recordings. Multiple times on the corner of thirty one hundred north and seven fifty east. And they've completed twenty twenty two's road projects, which are thirty one hundred north on the east and west ends of the city. Twenty by fifty north, two thousand north and fifteen ten north. And then they're doing a water line replacement on thirty fifty north between ten fifty east and twelve hundred east. And then they delayed two projects, which are first the water line replacement on Fruit and Drive, and they'll start in July. To avoid cherry days activities, thank you for that. And the second one is the creek through Bicentennial Park that are gonna wait till October when they can defer the water.
Anything else you'd like to report?
No, other than they're awesome.
Okay, I know that we did have to take some things out of the budget this year, Dave, that we. We planned and hopefully we get those ready for next. Budget season. On the loop.
Yeah.
As you call it. All right. Any public comments meeting this evening? I think we did. Say we would answer any questions Brenda had at this point in time. And we'll address that in the council mayor comments, but are there any other public comments from anyone here in the audience or anyone online, John?
No one online yet, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on then. Look for comments. Councilmember Swanson, I believe I saw you jotting down Brenda's questions.
I did.
I thought you did.
No, I, I did not drop them down.
I know that we addressed the one on the part-time employees. Or whatever, once John should.
And one of the questions, or one of the things that was mentioned was employee benefits for part-time. So we don't offer insurance or dental. Those type of things, but we do offer vacation days off. And 401K as well as they're in the URS system. So there, there is some part-time benefit. But it's not the ones typically most people think of.
Healthcare, which a lot of people are starting to even look at that now based. Brenda, are you still with us? I'm sorry, I, I have it right down. I thought I inadvertently saw Councilmember Swanson.
I was writing things, but didn't get everything.
Yes, I am here. I asked about the Arts Guild that had three meetings and then what has happened to it? I thought its purpose was to help plan the events for the city. And. I think that's it. Good advertising for the taxation meeting and just the feeling of the comments tonight that the events coordinator. Was given more importance than an extra officer. So I guess the, the biggest thing that I had questions about was the Arts Guild.
Yes, the chairperson and co-chairperson resigned. Their positions there felt like they didn't have meaningful assignments. And also had some other things come up in their life. We kind of stepped back from the committee meetings early on until we could get some more definition. Of how they could help. To make sure that we had a, a way that they could have meaningful assignments. So we stepped back on that until the chair and co-chair could. Kind of outline more specific responsibilities. But they both indicated that other things had come up and that they felt like. Their positions weren't meaningful, so.
I understand, excuse me, I understand other things coming up in their lives and families, but. If that committee was to be restarted, would that alleviate the pressure on Tiffany for an events coordinator? And then it could possibly be done mostly by a volunteer as it was stated that it would originally be?
I couldn't answer that, but we could ask Councilmember Barker to get with Tiffany and see if that would be helpful. So Councilmember Barker, if you would get with Tiffany and see if that would be. Helpful when you report back to us, that would be good.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Councilmember Severin, you got a comment?
Yes, Mayor, had a communication from one of the citizens about Utah Water Savers. If that's familiar, if you're familiar with that, John or Dave. And I guess it's a, I just pulled up their website. And it allows for people to get rebates like the Flip Your Strip. And when he contacted them, they said, we can't give you. Anything because your, your ordinance in North Alka doesn't. It's against the ordinance to change your strip, your pathway. So that's what I was told.
John, do, would you like, you have a comment you'd like to make on that? I don't believe our ordinance prohibits flipping a strip, as many people have done it.
So he, in fact, state law says the city can't require grass anymore. But probably what he meant to say was, we would have to pass a very intense ordinance to allow us to participate in the Flip Your Strip program. And the burden on Flip Your Strip would fall on our department. Meaning it wouldn't be, the Savior Water, it wouldn't be behind you, it would be us that would go out and inspect and verify and do all the work and it. It just is, it was too expensive. That's why we haven't recommended that we participate. Although we are encouraging people to be as water-wise as they can be.
Okay.
Yeah, number Barker, did you?
Just to piggyback on Utah Water Savers, you can still get a rebate for your smart water controller. To that person who have done that. You can get a rebate for a water-wise toilet. I've done that twice. So there are other rebates still.
But you can't, you can't get anything for anything with your.
No, that's true. That comes through behind you.
Okay.
Okay, no else, Councilmember Severin?
Uh, no, thank you.
Councilmember Swanson, did I see you have a comment?
Yeah, a couple of one on the flip the strip, the money that's, that is available out there for reimbursement. As Councilman Barker just said, it comes through the water districts, not through the city. The other is. Tiffany, you're still here. In the, this would be my ninth cherry days. That I've been involved in. Every year, what's it like trying to get volunteers? Sufficient numbers of volunteers to help with Cherry Days? Every year? Like pulling teeth. It's been like that every year for the decade that I've been directly involved. We've used Facebook, social media. The monthly newsletter. Short of going door to door and asking individuals to commit. I don't know what else could have possibly be done, except maybe buy an ad on the front page of the paper. To ask for volunteers and it's like pulling teeth. Last year, however, was different. What was the difference last year compared to every other year?
Well, last year, Cherry Day was more of a pop rate, if I just think.
Well, but what, what caused the volunteer outpouring?
Ever seen School of Rock?
Well, I tell you what the difference was last year. We threatened not to have it. We said it isn't gonna happen unless you put it on. And here we are this year back to the city putting it on. And getting sufficient volunteers is like pulling teeth.
We did ask for help and working with the group who got volunteers from last year and they're having a thing shared with them.
Yeah, so for me, the lesson is. If you want volunteers for something like Cherry Days, what we do as a council is we threaten not to have it. It isn't gonna happen unless you put it on. Because the moment we go to fund it and do it. The volunteers evaporate and I am all for it being a one hundred percent volunteer. Event, last year's event was fabulous. The parade was great and they did an amazing job. But we didn't see that materialize this year. They didn't come forward. And as we've sought volunteers, it's, they've been few and far between. I don't know what we do to get volunteers. I'd love to hear. More ideas, but for the decade I've been involved, they're very difficult to get.
I know there's one particular citizen that has an idea on how to get volunteers because he feels very strongly. That we have a volunteering community and. Indicated how that could happen, so maybe we could call upon him.
That would be great.
To help us.
So that would be great. Aside from that, counsel. This is. This is the budget season to take all budget seasons in the. This is my ninth budget season. And this one takes the cake by far. I can't express to you how grateful I am for the work that you've done. And that you will continue to do between now and August. To scrutinize, to trim every piece of fat that is possible. And to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect the revenues that come in from our residents. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanson. Any other comments from staff? Any other comments from staff?
Just to publicly announce that we will be canceling the June twenty eighth meeting due to the primary election.
Okay, council meeting on the twenty eighth is canceled. Truth and Taxation Hearing will be a Monday, just to make sure.
We have to verify with the county to get the right day because they have to make sure we don't conflict with any of the. We have a, an individual who is appealing a building code interpretation. He has, our code, our, our code gives him the option of going before the hearing officer or the council. He has selected the council. So in the next month, we'll be scheduling that. My question to the council is to vote one, but one's a question, the other one's a direction. Would you like to do it on a regular council meeting night? Or do it as a special you? It will probably take fifteen minutes to fifteen or twenty minutes, I would think. Any thoughts or feelings on that?
I would suggest that council doesn't have any, just do it during the regular council meeting.
Okay, and then the, the other comment.
First of the agenda, so the individual can come.
Okay, and, and then the other comment is because you will be acting as quasi judicial officials. And you should not be talking to people about it outside of the meeting. So think of yourself as a judge. And, you know, if, if you, that's why I'm not saying who it is or what it's about, but just if anyone approaches you and says, you know, they're appealing this decision, just let them know that. They need to, they'll be able to participate in the council meeting. And I think it, it should be a, a pretty straightforward chance for the council to. Hear the case and make a decision, but this is one of those times you get to put on another hat. So welcome to a whole new experience.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.